Good evening. It is September the 3rd, 2025. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Ed. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I make a motion to resume open session at 6:00 PM.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pursuant to the general provisions, Article 3-305 and 3-104, the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County met in a closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals, to consult with counsel, to obtain legal advice, to consult with staff consultants or other individuals about pending or potential litigation, to conduct collective bargaining negotiations, or consider matters that relate to negotiations.
At this time, we will look at the approval for minutes for the last few sessions. If there's no objection, I will read them all together and we can vote on them at one time. Sorry. Well, yes. Approval of the current agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we will talk about the minutes. Looking for approval for minutes for the July 2nd open and closed sessions, the July 16th closed session, the August 6th open and closed sessions.
I motion to approve the minutes for the July 2nd closed and open session, the July 16th closed and open session, August 6th closed and open session.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Kibler. You're up.
We haven't done these in a while.
That's all right. We'll learn you.
Got a thumb though. Okay. Good evening, everyone. So this is a fun part of the night where we do monthly awards. And so we'll run through these and excited to bring up first, our Energizer Bunny Award and Mr. Chip Brittingham and Mr. Wayne Humphries that sponsor this. This award is given to a staff member or volunteer who keeps on going. It is sponsored by Bayview Financial. And tonight, our Energizer Bunny Award winner is Mr. Mark Lewis, and he is nominated by Mrs. Becky Tubman and the Graysonville Elementary School Leadership Team. If they all want to come up. And so Mrs. Tubman and the team say, since his very first day at GES, our new custodian has gone above and beyond in every way. He leads by example with a strong work ethic, clear and honest communication, and an unwavering commitment to doing what is best for our GES family. He approaches every task with pride and care. His positive energy is contagious, uplifting those around him and inspiring others through both his attitude and his actions. He models integrity, teamwork, and dedication in everything he does and has quickly become an exemplary role model whose presence makes GES a brighter, better place each and every day. Just want to stay here for a picture?
Yep.
I've never been in front, so.
Just make sure that you can see me. Ready? One, two, three. Reef slide to your left just a little bit. Here you go. One, two, three.
All right. So the next one is the Spirit Award. Again, this one's nominated by Principal Mrs. Becky Tubman and the GES Leadership Team, so come on back up. And our Spirit Award winner is Mrs. Heidi Wilks. So the team had this to say. "We are proud to present the Spirit Award to our physical education teacher who truly embodies the spirit of going above and beyond for the students and staff of GES. Her creativity, dedication, and passion for health and wellness shine through in everything she does. She collaborated with the Ken Island High School Art Department lead teacher and students to bring her blacktop to life with painted games for recess, applied for and secured a grant to provide a free smoothie machine for our school." I paused because I knew we would get some oohs on that. "And organizes festive school-wide one-mile runs such as the Turkey Trot and Jingle Bell Run." Not as many oohs for the run. "She also secured funding from a local organization to create a running trail at GES, ensuring lasting opportunities for fitness and fun. Always seeking new ways to support the well-being of our school community, she exemplifies what it means to go above and beyond, making GES a healthier and happier place for all." And the next award is our Shining Star Award. The Shining Star Award is presented to an individual in our school system who shines. This award is nominated by Mrs. Sarah White, Principal at Kennard Elementary School. She wants to come up. And our Shining Star goes to Ms. Terry Vlaos. Mrs. White says, "This summer, Ms. Vlaos went above and beyond to support Kennard in every way possible. At a moment's notice, she was ready to step in cheerfully answering phones, greeting visitors at the door, and lending a helping hand wherever it was needed. While others may have felt overwhelmed by the busy start of a new year, Ms. Terry handled it all with grace and positivity. She truly embodies what it means to be part of the Kennard family, and we are grateful for her shining example."
All right. Three, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Next item on the agenda is board involvement. Who would like to start?
I would. Well, I would like to welcome everybody back to a new school year, and I would like to say thank you. And this is our first evening for our two new board members from Ken Island and Queen Anne's.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, let's see. We had a new employee breakfast, new teacher breakfast. So welcome to all of our new teachers that have started in the county. Congratulations on joining Queen Anne's County Public Schools.
I will say I was holding on for dear life the month of August.
I know.
I was like, these kids need to go back to school. But I'm ready. I'm charged. I'm ready for September, and I'm going to do some big things. But yes, I didn't really get a chance to do much of August. But I am excited to have everyone back in school so I can think clearly. And I'll be back at it.
Welcome back. New school year. Welcome, you two. Nice to meet you both today. Matt, you officially started your first day of school. So best of luck. Look forward to working with you. So that's what I have for this month. As Kendra said, August has been a blur.
All right. We went to the Open Meetings Act training in August. So we did that with the county. Thanks for letting us know about that. And then we were part of the opening ceremonies at the county fair, which was very exciting and we need to be a part of.
Pie con... Was it pies?
Pies?
No, cakes.
Was it one of you judging? Sorry.
Cakes. And they were really good, but I'm not eating cake again for a year.
That's fair.
A lot of cakes. So welcome, Mr. Reeve Adams and Mr. Thomas Muncher. So normally you guys would do a brief of what's going on in the school. I don't know if you're prepared, but if you are, you can take... Cycle back and forth, who starts first and who goes second?
Well, I'll just start today.
Okay.
So we have a couple back-to-school events. We have Club and Activity Fair, which will be held tomorrow to encourage students and involvement in the school. We also have a lot of upcoming athletics, such as JV football starts off tomorrow, which will be the official start of the fall season for our teams. And then we also have a varsity football game, which will be next Friday. Actually, no. It will be September 26th, sorry. And that's a big one because that's the 2025 Ravens Rise High High School Showdown series, which is the Ravens will have cheerleaders, players, their marching band, and all that stuff that will come down to the school and help support.
At the high school?
Yes. And then also there will be 2,500 donation to support like Athletics Department from Duncan and also the Ravens team. And then upcoming like student events and activities is Friday, September 5th. The school will be the School Picture Day, as well as September 8th, the Fall Play Auditions will be that week. Friday, September 12th, recognition of our first responders during our first varsity football game. That's coming up. That's next week. And then as well as that weekend, September 13th, we'll be hosting a marching band competition throughout the day. And then the last thing on the agenda is Wednesday, September 17th, College Application Night will be at the high school. And that's all for now.
Thank you.
Upcoming extracurricular events. Today was the first Best Buddies Meeting, is year two of the Best Buddies Club. On the 5th, we'll have a Walk of Champions Parade for the Queen Anne's County High School Clay Target Team. On the 11th, we will have Senior Career Day, as well as a home football game and a Heroes Night. It's a law enforcement, military recognition. And then senior and underclassmen events. On the 15th and 16th, we will have Underclassmen Picture Day. On the 17th, we will have MVA Learner's Permit Testing in the cafeteria. On the 25th and 26th, we will have Senior Portrait Dates. On the 30th, we will have Justin's Senior Class Meeting to discuss cap and gown orders. That is all.
Already talking about graduation. So just got started. You're up.
All right. Well, Mr. Jared, thanks for that, for those comments. I would say that a lot of thoughts go through a new superintendent's mind over the summer, but hearing my wife exclaim at 6:30 in the morning that she saw the first bus of the school year was the best news I heard, that they were rolling and the kids were on the way to school. So I'm excited about the start to the year. It's been a busy summer. We welcomed 28 new teachers to the district, which was really nice. If you were there, it's great. Dr. Schreckengoss and I went around to all 14 schools over two days to welcome teachers back into our buildings. A lot of buzz and excitement. It was great. And then we also, the whole executive team, were out and about the county the first three days of school, welcoming our students back into the buildings. And it was just, it's great to see the energy and the enthusiasm, and it's fun to be back and back in a routine. And I'm sure parents are happy about that, too. I do want to welcome our new student board members tonight. I also let the board know, I've spent a lot of time this summer just meeting with different community leaders around the district, like the director of our library, emergency services, our health officer, the sheriff, just to kind of keep the line of communication open between the school system and leaders of other community organizations. A lot of them I knew from my other capacity, but now as superintendent, I just felt like that was important. I shared in my welcome back letter to families and staff that are setting three priorities for the year, and I look forward to sharing a presentation on that at our October board meeting. I didn't do it tonight, just with the agenda that we already had set, but goals, priorities of student achievement, budget, and a new leadership academy that myself and the team will all be working on. So I look forward to making a little presentation on that in our October meeting, but then also following up and talking about those priorities throughout the year.
Thank you. Ms. Kibler.
Okay. Citizen participation and public comment. "We ask all speakers to keep in mind the following guidelines. Speakers should sign the roster, including their telephone number and address. Comments should be limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted and writing. Statements of the board should relate to the matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or board president. If you have specific questions, the board will make sure an appropriate staff member responds to your question. The board respects your desire and right to convey your message freely, but asks as a courtesy to this board and our citizens to show respect for all." And first up, we have Amanda D'Onofrio.
Hello, everyone.
How are you?
Good. How are you? Good to see you all. To see some new faces for superintendent and assistant superintendent that I'm familiar with speaking to. I really enjoyed my time on the CAC last year and a lot of what Dr. Schreckengoss brought to the table there. And I look forward to continuing that this year. My concerns for this school year kind of are similar to last school year with the primary concern being staffing for our schools, especially at the elementary school level. As I've mentioned before, for children who struggle with reading, it is imperative that we get them as fully supported and up to date in their educational needs by the third grade because after that point, it becomes statistically harder to do so, and rates of dropout and other future issues reading are met there. Currently, we have our reading tests that you put out for third through 12th grade, which I do not feel adequately assess students' needs the way that they could be assessed if we had people in those buildings. As it stands right now, CES has no tutors, and they did when my daughter first started. And to the best of my knowledge, they have one person helping support all first-grade students and one person helping support all second-grade students as an additional guide to the teachers that they have in their classrooms. And it's simply not enough to meet the need in the community. And if we cannot get them caught up at that level, then we're going to continue to struggle to bring up test scores, which they'll meet later in life. We need to support them from those early ages. My daughter's now in Kennard, and I believe they have one tutor there. So again, staffing, not just for the support, but also for the teachers, where we're looking to have still 25, 26, 27, 28 students in a class. If those students are in classes that have a lot of children that need the extra attention for reading and math, as my daughter does, that makes the problem exponentially harder to meet. And I do not want to lower my standards for the quality of public education. I expect my children to get in this county. So I am looking very much to the future to seeing what we can do to meet those needs and to get more people in here, supporting the teachers and supporting the students. Because currently, it's great that we're making strides, but it isn't enough to meet the needs of the students and the teachers. I also see later on in the agenda, we're discussing the Charter School. As a parent, I'm always interested to see what other options there are to meet the needs of my children, and I would like to hear more about that. Right now, I have my kids who struggled with reading, and there was really nothing going on during the summer to help support those kids so they could stay at least on par with where they were before the end of last school year, before sending them back with, you know, a big gap of time where they don't get very much instruction. They're working with their parents who aren't educated in how to help them advance in these. And two years in a row, we didn't have that for my kid.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Lorna Leone.
Good evening. My name's Lorna Leone, member of the Queen Anne Classical Charter School Board. My experience in education includes serving as an elementary school principal as well as an assistant superintendent for instruction and school performance in Anarondo County, grades K through 12. My comments tonight will discuss how classical education is different from a traditional public education. Classical education emphasizes formal grammar and logical training within the trivium, Socratic discussions, and debates to develop critical thinking, analysis, and persuasive communication. Even though Queen Anne's County Public School uses some of these educational practices and philosophies, our charter places a constant emphasis on these skills. As an example, the word memorization has become a bad word in current mathematic academic practices and approaches. In our instructional system, we emphasize rote memorization of basic math facts as a foundation for developing calculation skills. The classical model embodies the belief that if those math facts are ingrained at an early point, then improved mathematical fluency leads to stronger work, number sense, which in turn leads to higher-level analysis in more advanced math. The current model in Queen Anne County and many other districts around the state is reversed, placing an emphasis on number sense ahead of fluency in mathematics. The Charter School believes that our approach is better aligned to known strategies of cognitive development, and we think many families agree and are looking for that choice. Aligned to the cognitive development of students in the early stages of learning, as well as for some struggling learners, the classical model places an almost exclusive focus on phonetic mastery. This removes many of the shortcuts on the whole language approach, and like math, it focuses on the basics first. Tangent to the alignment with known cognitive development, the Charter School will instruct with a dual-language approach. As all research tells us, students in the early grades are cognitively primed to absorb multiple languages. Not only does this serve them in interactions with others, research suggests that it equally increases their critical analysis in many areas. Our Charter School would teach Spanish in the early grades and then shift to Latin in third and fourth grade. That would be aligned to literature studies, as well as used in science and math. In the later grades, students would have the choice to pursue more in-depth in any of those languages. I would urge you to approve our application in hold. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ashley McClery.
Good evening. My name is Ashley McClay, and I am the president of the Board of Directors for the Queen Anne's Classical Charter School. I'm also a mother of three young, school-aged children and a resident of Queen Anne's County who attended Queen Anne's County Public Schools kindergarten through 12th grade. As a product of QACPS schools, I attended and graduated from both college and law school in Maryland. I also formally served on the DC State Board of Education, where I worked with the DC Charter School Board, notably one of the strictest charter school authorizers in the country. I currently work in education policy and serve on several nonprofit boards. I stand before you today to urge you to bypass the recommendation of the committee and the charter application review committee and make the decision supported by Maryland law and charter school precedents in our state. Making such a decision, independent of the committee's flawed recommendation, is your statutory right. The committee's recommendation is only one part of the greater package of materials surrounding this school's, and the entire package, taken as a whole, clearly supports approval of Queen Anne's Classical Charter School. Our package not only outlines why we have met that legal threshold for approval, but you have also received letters of support from a wide array of our county's policymakers, including but not limited to every single one of our county council or county commissioners, state delegates, business owners, and, and many others, state senators as well. It is clear that officials answerable to our county's citizens through the democratic process support our efforts, as does the law, while only unelected bureaucrats using arbitrary standards oppose it. The question presented today is, does our application show you that we have the capacity to open a charter school? It does. This is the first time that I have been afforded the chance to speak to you or for the public to hear about this school, and it's during public comment where I have three minutes. All you have seen is our application and the report from the charter application review committee, which respectfully, we disagree with in multiple places. I am not sure that you, the Board of Education members, have even been made aware that the Maryland State Department of Education guidance allows for you to hold a public meeting ahead of the meeting in which the final vote is scheduled, where we may provide a short presentation, providing the public with an opportunity to learn about the proposals and an opportunity for questions from you. The Maryland Alliance for Public Charter Schools states in its authorization, uh, information that doing this is the only transparent and public opportunity to hear about the proposed school. And the Da Vinci case, which is cited multiple times in the superintendent's denial report, is not actually truly embraced. The case states that the applicant should be able to address the board and address the denial points and not just in public comment.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up.
I urge you to approve this application, and I would like to, uh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have Audrey Scott.
Thank you so much. My name is Audrey Scott, Chairwoman Bent and members of the Queen Anne County School Board. I am a founder of the Classical Charter School for Queen Anne County. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on a subject near and dear to my heart. When I became aware of the proficiency rates in the public schools several years ago, I was motivated to do something, anything, to help correct the situation. Thirty-seven percent for language arts and 31% for math means that 63% of our students are not performing at grade level in language arts, and 69% of our students are not performing at grade level in math. You can see from the Bay Times, which was just published last week, the needle hasn't moved much and change is needed. As a former first grade teacher, I started looking for the causes and for solutions. I discovered that students perform at grade level or beyond at charter schools, but almost exclusively at classical charter schools that employ the trivia model of instruction, teaching students how to think, not what to think, and relying on parental involvement. We have visited charter schools throughout the state and have been firsthand in an environment that focuses on the seven virtues of constancy, courage, diligence, humility, love, temperance, and patience. It seemed the most logical approach would be to establish a classical charter school here in Queen Anne County that would add an enhancement to the present system and help improve our proficiency rates and provide parents an alternative choice for their children. This is an innovative model that is distinct from our current public school system. For the past two years, I along with my colleagues have dedicated ourselves to establishing an exemplary classical charter school that meets all state requirements and would position Queen Anne County as a leader in education and provide a model for the eastern shore, those counties that also wish to enhance their school systems. We completed the 191-page application packet with the assistance of a professional charter school consultant. We have been told by professionals in the field that our application was comparatively speaking, far better and more complete than others that have been approved throughout the state. So you can imagine our surprise that the superintendent has recommended denial. And the report from the committee fails to address any strengths of the application beyond the team's, our enthusiasm, prompt follow-up, and active participation. Right there, you should have paused. The application determines our capacity. Capacity is interpreted to mean the ability to operate a school. Our board consists of two former teachers, a former vice superintendent of Anarundale Schools, a former DC State Board of Education member, the former financial manager for Queen Anne's Public Schools, and for the past several months, the advice and counsel of Sean Kenner, a former Queen Anne County principal of an elementary, a middle, and a high school. In fact, John Grow, your supervisor accountability, called our governing board broad and robust. The only issue before you is the acceptance of our application. The only issue is capacity. It's a capacity to operate a school, and that, my friends, is goes without saying. I urge you to approve our application. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, I apologize, I can't read the last name, but Kate Boland?
No worries.
Pretty awful. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm Kate Boland. I'm also a co-founder and a member of the Board of Directors of Queen Anne's Classical Charter School. My comments tonight are, in my opinion, an unfortunate result of the lack of understanding by the QACPS Review Committee of the charter school application and related documentation submitted by us, QACCs. Having said that, we don't want to in any way denigrate the work that all of the members of that review committee do every day in their jobs. This is not a criticism in that respect. Lacking an opportunity for collaborative discussion, we have submitted extensive written comments on the deficiencies that we found in the report. First, the report suggested the model lacks integration with 21st century instructional strategies such as communication and critical thinking. But throughout our application, we outline and define the methods by which we will be instructing in a program that not only hits these elements, but embodies them. The report cites plans for ELL students, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, lacks specificity. The critique indicates a view that we should be ready today for any and all potential special needs that should come through the door. Our current plan allows for a six-month period from lottery enrollment to the first day of school, which would be sufficient time to prepare for the needs, including staffing outlined in any IEP and ML. We have the knowledge of what needs to be done here, and we stand ready to activate that knowledge when we have an enrollment. Finally, we have proposed to implement, to align with QACPS on the Excel's accreditation for pre-K. We're totally in agreement with that, but we've found out that it's a two-year process and requires the school to be up and running to, to complete it. So we would be willing, and we stated this in the supplemental documentation that we gave to the board, to delay the start of our pre-K. So instead of starting with pre-K K1, we'd start with K1 and 2 and revisit the pre-K issue later. The report then goes into a lack of governance and leadership experience, and Audrey has commented on some of that. I don't know if I need to do it. It, it was kind of surprising because it was so obviously mistaken. We had provided resumes and bios of the members of the board, so it was very clear what their qualifications were, as, as Audrey mentioned, Lorna Leone, Erin Coyne, who's a 16-year secretary at the school, Whitney Gast is the CFO, and Board President Ashley McClay. Audrey herself is a former teacher, and that experience is a driving factor in her commitment to creating an alternative educational option for parents and children in Queen Anne's County.
Thank you. Did I expire already?
Yes.
Okay, well. Ms. Eichler, before you move on, I would like to say one thing. It seems to be very clear from the last three speakers. There's a disc, there's a miscommunication or a disconnect. This board was not prepared to vote tonight because we wanted to ask questions. So after Dr. Kibler and his team present their presentation, we were expecting that the charter school would come up and present, answer questions, because the board has its own questions that we would like to ask. And so after we've had those questions asked, give us a week, because we've had less time to see the back and forth and then be able to make a decision.
Chairman, Chairman Bent, that was not relayed to us by the charter liaison, and I have, I have outlined in my written comments the multiple lack of technical assistance and instruction throughout this process. He said, "We have public comment, and you might bring us up to ask a couple of questions." We were not prepared to present, and we, he, we were told that September 10th might happen. We don't know. That if that happens, we don't know at the time, four, five, or six o'clock. I can read the emails from our liaison.
That's not necessary. I'd like to continue with public comment, but if members of the charter school would stay for that session, we would like to be able to ask you a few questions.
I do appreciate that, and we will be happy to stay and answer any and all questions. I do want to let you know that our legal counsel is not here this evening, and had we been informed that we would be presenting, I would have more materials and have an actual presentation for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Whitney Gast?
Hello, hello. President Bent, Vice President Caves, members of the board. My name is Whitney Gast. I'm a resident of Chester, Maryland, a graduate of Queen Anne's County Public Schools, and the treasurer of the Board of Directors for Queen Anne's, Queen Anne's Classical Charter School. I'm here tonight to urge you to support the approval of the Queen Anne's Classical Charter School's application. We'll discuss the financial considerations regarding the charter school. I will address the review committee's comments and discuss the potential cost savings the charter school presents for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. Queen Anne's County Classical, our Queen Anne's Classical Charter School provided a five-year operating budget that included conservative estimates for peer people funding compared to QA PSS's historical revenue. It also included required contributions to a contingency fund, and it carried a positive fund balance over the course of five years. This, oh, sorry. These factors mentioned by the review committee, declines in enrollment, grant delays, building expense overages, should be covered by all of those. Additionally, for anyone that is unaware, charter schools have the ability to fundraise from private donors to use for all aspects of school operations. Our charter school has already received private donations and local grants without having an approved charter. Once Queen Anne's County Classical Charter School does have an approved charter, we will kick off a fundraising campaign to raise any funds necessary to cover the costs that are not covered by the peer people funding or grant amounts. The operating budget for QA CCS is sustainable based on several factors. However, granting the charter will allow us to formally fundraise and increase the funds on hand to address some of these concerns. Additionally, our charter school could create the opportunity to educate students for less money, creating savings opportunities for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. Peer people funding is intended to follow each student. However, charter schools are only given a portion of that funding. For example, charter schools only receive between 75% and 98% of the peer people funding. The portion not given in the charter would stay with the public school district. That is the savings for QA PS because the district would be receiving funds for students that are not in their buildings. I'd say a couple of other cost saving, cost-saving factors. Transportation expenses. Transportation is a funding that, a funding category that is historically underfunded by blueprint allocations across the state. Much of the, much of the unassigned above MOE funds that the county might provide to cover, the cover, or sorry, much of the funds, the unassigned above MOE funds that the county provides covers many of these transportation expenses. If Queen, if Queen Anne's County Public Schools were not required to provide transportation for approximately 100 students, which charter school enrollment is expected to grow each year, that would allow more unassigned above MOE funds to be used for other vital expenses within Queen Anne's County Public Schools. Additionally, the buyback services. Charter schools are able to purchase buyback services from the school district. Some examples include items like payroll services, sharing the financial management system, using the power school license, certain special education services, et cetera, et cetera. If Queen Anne's County Public Schools were to provide the buyback services to the charter school, they would retain a portion of the peer people funding without the expense of educating the student directly. The Maryland State Board has stated that these negotiated services can be up to 25% of the peer people blueprint funding allocations. I'd say for all of the reasons above, I ask the members of the board to review the materials in detail and reconsider the recommendation and approve our charter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erin Coyne?
Good evening. My name is Erin Coyne, and I'm a longtime teacher, including many years, right here in Queen Anne's County. I am also the secretary of Queen Anne's Classical Charter School Board. In my years with QACPS, there has always been a deliberate, consistent focus on UDL, Universal Design for Learning. I believe that emphasis on UDL continues today. As I am sure you are aware, among the core tenets of UDL is the idea that not all learners approach education in the same manner. QACPS has been a leader in pushing for the differentiated opportunities in the classroom aligned with this philosophy. The aim is to produce instruction in a variety of manners so that it may reach the greatest number of students in the most efficient way. All of this in the name of reaching a wider group of students in areas of their strengths and different learning styles. I believe we are looking at a scaled up version of that philosophy here tonight. The proposal that you will consider later in the evening for the Queen Anne's Classical Charter School offers another choice for our families and students, a different approach to teaching, learning, and demonstrating mastery. While this may not be the best fit for every student in Queen Anne's County, we believe that it will be an outstanding option for the majority of students and families. Our application clearly outlines an approach that is different from the traditional method or model, a proven approach that in other districts where this has been approved for families. I have witnessed firsthand how successful a classical education can be. Prior to teaching here in the county, I fell in love with teaching while working in a classical school and decided to go back to college to pursue a teaching degree. I loved the way students were taught and the virtues were infused throughout each day. In fact, I loved it so much that I found a way for my son to attend. He had an amazing education and is a highly successful young man now. It seems to me that the approval of this application is in line with the core philosophies of UDL embraced by MSDE and QACPS. We want to give students and families the option to select an instructional model that is best suited for them, not to accept a one-size-fits-all approach. The addition of our charter school adds another tool in the toolbox for Queen Anne's County. It is not, does not weaken our school system. It strengthens it with additional time-tested options. I urge you to approve this charter so that our board can get to work on the important tasks in front of us and open the opportunity for students and families in Queen Anne's County. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the committee's time and... I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the committee's time and efforts in this too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Marcy Mammas? Sorry.
Good evening, President Bent and Dr. Kibler and the rest of the board. I wanted to come as your, oh, my name is Marcy Mammas. I live in Chestertown. I work at Ken Island High School, and I am your 2025-26 Teacher of the Year. So I wanted to come and tell you the things that I've been doing to represent our county. So in end of August, I did attend the Tides of Grace Community Family Fun Fair. That was an amazing event. I did not get in the dunk tank as I told you I would. My 15-year-old son did. I did man their information booth. So I was able to direct families to so many resources they provided, so free school supplies, backpacks, haircuts, and fun. My 11-year-old ran a tent with little ducks for the really young children. And it was just a really wholesome event in Centerville, and I was so glad that I could attend. I was able to address the new teachers at their meeting and inspire them. I got a lot of positive feedback from that, and I was just thankful for the opportunity to talk to them. And then I did join Dr. Kibler and Ms. Sutherland and Ms. Bent at the county fair and did the parade. I was very excited, and I got to see some of my students show their horses. So it was all-around, very fun night. At our first CTE department meeting for the entire county, Mr. Tally had me speak, and I was able to share with the interactions that I've had with our state superintendent, Dr. Wright, and her thoughts on CTE. She's a very big proponent of CTE. I have had the opportunity to sit down with her twice and talk with her, so I was able to share some of that. And I hope to be, again, still included on some of her boards that she's reaching out. And then just most recently, I was at the commissioners' meeting, and I was gratefully, I got to speak, and I also gratefully accepted a press, a T-shirt press for our school store. So we are starting our imprint. My five students that are going to be my key students to start it are so excited. So we just got the press. We've got it all installed. We've got our area set up, and we have our T-shirts. So we're going to start with our first sample ones, thank the commissioners for their generous donation to our program, and then look to grow it. My kids are so excited. Coming up in September, so I'm very excited, this Friday, Dr. Kibler and I are going to go to a baseball game, and I'm going to accept a check for, I believe, $500 for our county. So I'm very excited to go to a Shorebirds game. I'm bringing my family. I'm just really excited to represent the county. I was told that this week or next, they're going to announce the seven finalists for Maryland State Teacher of the Year. So I am opt, I don't know, just excited, but they said this week or next. So we'll see. If I don't make it to finalist, on 9/20, I was invited by the new chapter of Delta Kappa Gamma to come to their meeting. They're going to hear a presentation from a teacher who has just been awarded her life coach certificate, and she's going to have a presentation. And then they wanted to have me present and talk to me, and several of them are Teachers of the Year, and I'm very excited. If I do get selected as finalist, on September 20th, I will be interviewing at the Maryland State Board of Education. So fingers crossed, see how that goes. And then on the 26th, I have shared with Dr. Kibler is our gala for the MSD, and I am invited to that. So that is my month ahead, guys. If you'll be hearing from me in two weeks. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for letting me share.
We have Susan Willis.
Good evening, Susan Willis. I live in Chestertown, Maryland. I'm just here to introduce myself as the new appointed president of the Queen Anne's County Education Association. I wanted to come out tonight to just introduce myself and say hello. And I wanted to start the year off on a positive note. So we have a reason to celebrate. And as you all know, last year, we all took a hit. Every Queen Anne's County Public School employee, from superintendent down, had a pay cut, had some furloughs, and we are delighted to share that we are no longer faced with the furlough deductions in our paychecks. We love to wear red to show our solidarity, and we would like and love the board to join us this Friday when we get our first paycheck, to join us wearing red, just to celebrate our first furlough-free paycheck.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Next up is Ms. Kowalsz. It's, oh, Kowalski?
Kowalski.
Kowalski? There's no first name. It just says K.
Kathleen.
Kathleen Kowalski? Still here? How's she like?
Will you always ask if anybody else at the end?
Is there anyone else?
Is that the last one?
Yes, that is the last one. Somebody raising? Sure. Yes. Can you clearly state your name?
Yes, no problem. My name is Michael Gensler. I'm from Indianapolis, Maryland, but my son attends Centerville Elementary School right over here and right across the street here. My girlfriend still lives here, so that's why he attends school here. I'm coming here today mainly because of the mold issues that have been at Centerville Elementary and how they've been brought up and the ideas of remedying them. Couple of years ago, I was a home improvement contractor. I gave up that contract mainly because my son got an autism diagnosis, and I did not know what the future held. Seeing some of the remedies and some of the explanations coming from my background in mold and flood remediation, which was what my business really specialized in, they're not satisfactory to me. I don't know if you're able to pull the cloak over some other people's eyes because of their lack of knowledge, but I can tell you right now, what you're doing right now is putting lipstick on a pig. The air purifiers, removing certain tiles, and the explanation of one of the systems creating a recent problem, but the problem is you have employees that go back years and years and years and say, "This has been an ongoing problem," not just this year, but maybe five, 10, 15 years back. I would love to help you guys in remedying this. I want my, first thing I'd like to say, this board, this community, utmost respect for because I grew up in Anarone County. I know how the schools are over there, the schools over here, the teachers over here, the board over here. You guys care. You guys really, really, really means the difference that my son goes to school here versus Anarone County. He's going to get the help he needs here having autism to move forward. And I don't want to accuse anybody of having anything, but I think the way you guys are trying to remedy the issue is only leaving, is only putting it at bay. It's only going to say, hey, this is going to be a reoccurring issue down the road. So I'm not here to accuse anybody of anything. I'm just saying what I see as someone who was in the profession that worked on these kinds of jobs, you're not remedying it at all. You're just keeping it at bay. So I wanted to work with you guys together, you included, on how to fix this, to really fix this. Because if it's an ongoing issue for 15 years, I guarantee you it's all through, all around the attic area. See, what a lot of this is, is you see what you see here. What you don't see is between the ceiling tiles and the attic and all the organic material that goes on in between there. And we don't see that. So if you get an air quality test for this, that doesn't count what's going on up there. So I want to just make sure that we're all working together for a real resolution in order to ensure that our children are going into a school that's safe for them to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes everyone who has signed up for public comment. All right.
Just so they know, though, we do have a facilities discussion later on in our agenda tonight, too. So if you.
I haven't talked about any.
Okay.
Can't promise that.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up but would like to speak? All right, moving on. Human Resources Report. As the board met in closed session to discuss the Human Resources Report, and I get a motion at this time for approval.
I motion that Queen Anne's County approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye. Ms. Smith? Procare Therapy.
Good evening, President Bent, Dr. Kibler, board members, members of the executive team. For the record, my name is Jolene Smith. I'm the supervisor of Special Education. I come before you this evening with a contract approval request for your consideration. This is for a speech-language pathology assistant who will provide in-school services to students at one of our schools. She will provide five days of service through the 25-26 school year in the amount of $89,000, which will come from the local budget, and that is a budgeted amount. It is something that we did account for. Any questions? And I did just want to note that there's an extra zero on the first page there, so I apologize. Make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the contract with procare therapy for speech services. Fiscal impact $89,000, zero cents. Budget source is FY26, unrestricted operating budget.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's who anything's going on. QA CAs Girl Softball.
Good evening, President Bent, Dr. Kibler, board members, executive team. For the record, my name's Sed Pender. I am here before you tonight to seek approval of an athletic trip for the Queen Anne's County High School softball team. With me, I have Mr. Aaron Stewart, who is the head coach, and Mr. Shepherd, who is the principal. The approval for the overnight trip for Queen Anne's County High School varsity softball team to travel to Jacksonville, Florida to participate in the spring games. The Queen Anne's County High School varsity softball team would like, like I said, to travel to the spring games on March 10th, 2026 through March 15th, 2026. It will be approximately 11 students, along with the head coach. Assistant coaches would also attend a trip. If approved, Queen Anne's County High School softball team will conduct various fundraisers to cover all costs within the yellow sheet you received, also the agenda and the application, along with other information. The physical impact would be $8,250, and the budget sources through fundraising. Does anybody have any questions for Coach or for Mr. Shepherd?
I don't have any questions, but I absolutely love this idea. It takes me back when I played baseball in high school. We traveled from Pennsylvania, Alabama for two weeks every single year for baseball, and it was some of the best times I had in high school, and it brought our team together, the camaraderie, everything about it. I absolutely love this idea. So thank you. One thing I might suggest, though, is we just rented vans. You're already renting the vans, and parent volunteers drove down. That saved a bunch of costs than taking flights. I know flights are faster, but.
So we have two parents that are terrified to fly. So they're driving down, and they're taking all of the softball gear with them. So we're saving a lot of money with that.
Right. Yeah, mom have to show them.
If approved, of course.
Nice.
I make a motion that the Queen Anne's County Board of Education approve the overnight trip for the Queen Anne's County High School varsity softball team to travel to Jacksonville, Florida to participate on the spring games. No fiscal impact.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Real quick, we also found a local school and stayed in the gymnasium instead of getting a hotel, too. Did your mattress? No, I'm just saying, like, those are ways to save money that you don't have to have so much fundraising.
I reached out to a school down in the Jacksonville area. They're going to sponsor us. They're going to provide a lot of stuff for us. They're going to provide their field to practice on, a field to play their games on. I asked them if we needed to pay for umpires. They do not want us to pay for any umpires. And then they're going to do like a little team picnic on Saturday night before we depart Sunday morning.
Very nice. The only request that I have is that you keep us updated on the status.
Absolutely.
Because we like to know when our kids are doing well.
4-0.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Pender, keep going.
Thanks. I'm seeking approval tonight for the overnight trip for the Ken Island Varsity Swim Team. With me, I have Ms. Kate Beaton, who's the athletic director, and then also have head coach Cory Colburn. We are seeking approval. I'm sorry.
And Jen Parks.
And Jen Parks. Sorry, assistant coach. We're seeking approval for an overnight trip for Ken Island, like I said, to Plantation, Florida, to train at the Plantation Aquatic Center. The highest, Ken Island High School Varsity Swim Team would travel between December 19th, 2025 through December 23rd, 2025. There will be approximately 12 to 15 students, along with the head coach. Assistant coaches would also attend a trip. If.
12 to 15 boys and 12 to 15 girls.
Thank you. No, that's right. If approved, the Ken Island High School Varsity Team will conduct various fundraisers to cover all costs. Within that, you see the attached application along with the agenda. The physical impact is $27,660, and that will be done through fundraising. Any questions for the athletic director or the coaches?
The only question I have, I'm all for it. Can you elaborate what makes the Plantation facility so special and why you guys are going down?
So historically, with swimming being a winter sport, it's kind of a tradition for a lot of collegiate teams and club teams to take a winter training trip to a warmer climate. Our team recently has been excelling. We have a ton of athletes who are thinking about swimming in college. Here on the Eastern Shore, we don't have a, like, high-class aquatic facility. So, you know, when we go to regionals and states, that's really the only time they get to experience that multi-pool, long course potential. We don't even swim long course. That's a 50-meter pool like we see at the Olympics versus the 25-yard pool that we competed. So this trip is just a fantastic opportunity for them to explore that, you know, upper level training. We have, what else?
We've won Baysides twice, so we're going to try to win it again for the third time. And this would give us that opportunity, kind of, not at the end of our season, but kind of in the middle of our season to do that high-level training. Plus, a lot of other high schools will be also, you know, going down there as well to give us some.
And honestly, probably some college teams will be there. So we'll be able to scrimmage against them and, again, give our swimmers that taste of higher-level competition that they don't typically get here on the Eastern Shore.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the overnight trip for the Ken Island High School Varsity Swim Team to travel to Plantation, Florida to train at the Plantation Aquatic Center. No fiscal impact.
I'm going to recuse myself from this just because my family is very involved, very involved in swimming.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the same status.
We win Baysides for the third time in a row.
We'll be there for that, but we just still want to know how they do.
Oh, believe me, you'll know.
All right. Refugees and recycling.
Yes, ma'am. I'm here tonight to seek approval of QA CPS ITV number 2026-01 for refuse and recycle removal to BFI Waste Services LLC, commonly referred to as Republic Services. Queen Anne's County Public School is looking to put in place the contract for those services. The current contract expires September 30th. A public bid was issued on July 24th, 2025 with the following results. The initial contract period is two years with an option to renew for three additional renewed one year at a time. If you look down at the bottom portion, you will see year one starts out at $100,000, and then it goes up in 3.5% increments. BFI was the only company that put a bid in, but I would also like to say that the last bid we had prior, the last contract we had was about $115,000, so it is about $14,000 under what we're currently paying. Any questions or? Any questions or?
Why did the company we have now just didn't rebid?
It's still the same company.
Oh, it's, oh, but they went four- Oh. Can you do any better?
Now, one thing I probably contribute to part of that is, we did remove, we had little two-yard dumpsters that went to the sewing machines, but that's still a good price even if you take that out of there. So I just seek an approval of that contract.
I motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the contract with BFI Waste Services LLC for refuse and recycling services beginning October first, twenty-twenty-five. Fiscal impact, one hundred thousand dollars, ninety-three cents, FY twenty-twenty-six. Budget source, FY twenty-six unrestricted operating budget.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we have on the schedule a break. Does anybody need one? Can we continue to move on?
Yes.
All right. Citizens Advisory Council.
We're going out. The props. Good evening, everyone. President Bent, Dr. Kibler, members of the board and executive team. For the record, I'm Jennifer Schreckengoss, and I just want to discuss with you briefly the plans for Citizens Advisory Council for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So as you all know, this is, thank you, a requirement in COMAR regulations. And it's an opportunity to involve parents and community members in decisions that we make here, including policy, calendar, budget, data, et cetera. So we took the advice of our members and wanted to publicize this a little bit more this year with not only those topics being things that we discuss, but also spending some time at each meeting focusing on the goals of our strategic plan. So you'll see here, and this will be on our website tomorrow, what will happen at each of the meetings, our special guests that will attend the topics of discussion. Also going to ask principals to please put this out in their newsletters. So, parents, community members, if you're interested in being involved in this important work and helping us make these decisions, please reach out to your school's principal. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Blueprint Presentation.
Good evening, everybody. President Bent, Vice President, President Capes, board members, executive team, my name's Rob Watkins, supervisor of finance. And I'm here today to present to you some information about blueprint allocations. So the purpose is to review the funding formula for Queen Anne's County Public Schools for the fiscal twenty-six budget and to talk through some of the mandates given to us by the Blueprint for Maryland's Future Pillar Five. So, the Accountability and Implementation Board, lovingly called AIB, is an oversight committee that basically monitors the implementation of Blueprint. And we've heard about Blueprint before. Today, we are focusing on Pillar Five, which is governance and accountability. And what that is, is that Pillar Five focuses on building a robust governance and accountability infrastructure to ensure the entire Blueprint initiative is implemented effectively and equitably across the state. And the AIB creates the plans, monitors, and oversees the implementation of the Blueprint's vision in coordination with the Maryland State Board of Education and our local boards. AIB guides and evaluates how the Blueprint policies are carried out at both state and local levels. Essentially, Pillar Five connects the programs to the funding. So today, we're gonna go through some of the reporting features that are happening in our state in compliance with Blueprint. And we're gonna go through how the values are ascertained in our, in our funding formula. So, one, so by December twenty-twenty-five, we must have hit fifty percent progress to seventy-five percent compliance for the Blueprint. By the end of this year, we have to be seventy-five percent compliant with the Blueprint initiatives. And in fiscal year twenty-seven, we should be a hundred percent compliant. Reporting is currently collected by school, by each of the statutes, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through. It's based on the school base plus the per-people allocations. And we have been submitting reports on the fifteenth of each month for a while now. So, basically, we're talking about page five of the budget book tonight. The basic breakdown of the funds in, on, in our unrestricted fund pages, about thirty-four percent of the funds comes from the state and about sixty-six percent of the total funds come from local funds. Generally, when we look at the funding formula, we're looking a year into the past. So fiscal year twenty-six funding formula is based on student counts collected last fall in fiscal year twenty-five. Few notes of our unrestricted funds. There's a couple of examples that have restrictions on them. So for instance, there's a career counseling statute embedded inside Foundation that requires us to spend money in a certain way. In our case, we spend it on career coaches and materials to support career coaching at the high school and the middle school level. And as principal of Southern Middle School, I can tell you, it was a great program and we use that money very wisely. There's also another initiative called Community Schools, Concentration of Poverty. And in this year, Southern Elementary School and Southern Middle School are receiving funds to support their community school initiatives. Revenue streams come in state and local shares. They've been separated in our system. You'll see them on Budget Book on page five. And a note here is that federal funds are not part of our Blueprint funding formula. Blueprint compliance and that reporting, of course, is issued to the state board the fifteenth of each month. Things that are not included in our unrestricted funds page are not included in our Blueprint formula. It is transportation, the Blueprint Coordinator Funds, the local autonomy that the county gives us, and other state funds such as non-public placements, and all the other local funding stuff that we collect facility use these, other funding fees.
Quick question?
Yes.
Can you explain what a non-public placement is?
That's correct. That is a student who we have, has been ascertained by the IEP team but needs to be placed in another setting. So to look, to look at the page, I wanted to share an example. So if you look at the total foundational funding statute, you have to combine the state share plus the local share. So the foundation, the total foundation funding formula for those two is sixty-six million dollars. And that is true for each of the statutes to follow. When you look at the Blueprint funding formulas as part of the Blueprint, the state provides what the state share is gonna be, but it also dictates what the local share of each of the statutes is gonna be. It's based on a number of students and it's based, and also qualifies, based on the number of students, it qualifies for each of the different categories. So when you think of, say, compensatory education, there is a qualification process for students that have to qualify for that funding formula. And we'll talk about what that funding formula is shortly. Some of the values are adjusted for wealth. So when you go into our state aid file, you'll see that there are reductions for compensatory education, English learners, and special education. We also do not qualify for all the formulas. We do not qualify for a guaranteed tax-based program, and we do not qualify for a transition grant. So as we start to build that page, remember the big page five in the budget book, this is how it's calculated. So basically, last, last year, our total count was seven thousand one hundred and fifty-five students. So when you look at our foundation base, we get nine thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars for each of those students. Past that, there's an eligibility requirement for each of the students and then a per-people allocation based on, based on the number of students. So career and college readiness, we had five hundred and twenty-four eligible students. We received an additional five hundred and eighty-two dollars per student. Compensatory education, we had two thousand five hundred and ninety-eight eligible students at seventy-eight hundred and forty-two per student. Multi-language learners, four hundred and thirty-four eligible students, and we received nine thousand forty-one dollars per student. Special education, we, it was eight hundred and eighty-six students, and we received nine thousand five hundred and three dollars per student. Pre-kindergarten, there's two tiers in pre-kindergarten. There's two hundred and five tier-one eligible students and then nineteen eligible tier-two students. And you can see the rates associated with their enrollment here. The Concentration of Poverty, the community schools program, we get two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and twelve for each school for the purpose of helping with personnel and an additional one hundred and seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars for a per-people expense for additional resources at Southern Elementary School. The transitional, the struggle learners, TSI, targets key-three reading initiatives, and we had nine hundred and sixty eligible students at three hundred and fifty-six dollars per student. I left transportation up here because while it's not reported necessarily in the Blueprint, it is a state fund. So we get about four point five million dollars of state funds to support our program that costs about ten million dollars. So, going back to that example in Foundation, state share plus local share equals the total share. And when you break it down, you can see how it's allocated out to the schools. So the Foundation represents nine thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars times each of the number of students at the school for a total of seven thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars, which is a sixty-six million dollars. Remember, part of that Foundation also is the career counseling funds, sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents times the seven thousand one hundred and fifty-five students. So this is basically a piece of how the funding formula comes together to show how we are making, really, what we are intending to spend at each of the school levels. In October, we will come back and talk about what does this look like for each of the statutes as we talk about how we're being in compliance, meeting compliance with the Blueprint. So, back to the alignment of the pillars. This is how AIB sees accountability and the alignment with the pillars. So really, it's a graphic, but if you've got a pillar five, Foundation, the Blueprint, Transition Grants, Period Wage, and Guarantee Tax Base is what part of that particular pillar. But you see Foundation supports college career readiness. You see that pre-kindergarten is part of the early childhood education. This is kinda how it breaks it down, and it's not all-inclusive. Back to the Blueprint reporting. So after you kinda hear about that, this is the target we're trying, we are attempting to hit. So by December, we will present to them a report, a expenditure report that shows we made fifty percent progress towards that seventy-five percent compliance, and we're continuing to work every single day to get this here. One of the ways we're doing that is by looking at our budget codes. Boring accounting stuff here. But a quick look into our world. So fifteen budget codes, four-digit, four-digit account codes, and this is kinda how they're set up. And one of the ways we're looking to help us identify the expenditures more clearly is to create a structure that embeds the Blueprint directly into the budget codes. So we've taken that accountability part of the budget code and we've set aside specific codes to help us find and track the expenditures. It's been very successful.
We should add with that, too, Mr. Watkins.
Sure.
This is, this is happening for every expenditure, every line we have. And while we're zeroing in here on the accountability line, not only are we doing that if we say for a middle school English textbook, but we also have to work on the code for those textbooks to the individual schools as well. So it's not just this one three-digit piece.
It is true.
It's breaking down every school expenditure as well. And that's just trying to show the scope of the work.
Absolutely. So in the responsibility, fifteen happens to be Southern Middle School. So there's a school code and responsibility for every single school. And then we just went from all the school codes to adding eight different accountability measures for each of the buildings to kinda point the costs to the buildings.
So the difference is, school systems in the past have been able to do all of this in the aggregate. You get the giant pot of money, you divide it up as you see fit. Now we have to follow and attribute it to the student at the school level by the statute.
True. So true. So when we come back in October, we will talk about the allocations by school and talk about the per-people allocations and talk about how we're, Blueprint is helping us meet the needs of our students. Do you guys have any questions about the Blueprint funding?
Thank you.
I have the next two items, too.
Can I, can I say one more thing then before you move this out? So, I, part of the reason that I asked Mr. Watkins to do this presentation tonight, he's doing it in October. We have two more finance updates for you tonight, is just, it's one of my priorities, this budget. I said that in my opening comments, and I'll have a presentation about that. This is gonna be standing item every month. We've been accused of the not being transparent. I'm sure people will still say that about us, but I'm gonna do my part so that we can go to bed at night thinking that we are trying to share this information with the community so you know what we're working on.
What we're working with.
And what we're working with. That's a good way to say it. So that, that's why we're here tonight. So when I said budget as a priority, one is the presentation that Mr. Watkins just did on the Blueprint thing, which is an enormous task for Mr. Watkins's team, Dr. Schreckengoss and myself as well, trying to look at the expenditures and which statute they go to. But it's the next two pieces as well, showing you that every dollar that we receive, where we're sending it, how it's being spent, and how the budget's progressing throughout the course of the year. So it's kinda those two pieces when I talk about budget as a, as a priority and that, and that some level of transparency that I hope that we're moving in the right direction. We're not gonna fix every issue we had overnight, but this is the first step in the right direction.
I feel like I can speak for all the board members that we appreciate you putting this together.
One hundred percent.
And it's, thank you.
It's our pleasure. So the next two items are a fiscal year twenty-five kinda closeout as we're working towards the closeout and a fiscal year twenty-six update. So in the agendas, we've linked the summarized and the detailed expenditure reports for both fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. I'll start with the fiscal year twenty-five update. Finance sheets were shared. The year-end financial statement audit is ongoing. We expect it to be completed by, if not before, September thirtieth, as required by law. There's been one final minor transfer that we had to make inside of category five in contracted services. So we moved three thousand dollars from fifty-eight thirty-one to account eight thousand two. So just one small adjustment. The auditors could have us make some adjustments as well as needed kinda going forward. But pretty much where it looks good, and everything's coming together. Three of the four funds are almost done. The big fund has been worked on all week, so I'm expecting to hear some feedback here very soon. From the fiscal year twenty-six standing, again, the financial sheets are updated, as you heard from Ms. Wells. We finished our summer pays, and with that, went all the furlough deductions, which was excellent. So this paycheck that is given out this Friday is the first official paycheck for the fiscal year twenty-six for our ten-month employees. You can expect, as we're doing the work to kinda keep us Blueprint compliant, you can expect us to be coming with some budget adjustments next month. There's, there's several on the docket. Nothing that's gonna change any of the values inside, at the bottom line. They're just going to move money around to make sure that we're in compliance with the, with the budget. It's good budget monitoring practice.
That was a lot.
Very much.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Pender, facilities?
Sure. I, you all asked to make this an agenda item so we can bring this up, but-
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, he can come up. Yeah, absolutely.
You did?
We did not have something-
Oh, okay. No, it was a, it was a last, sort of, last-minute thing. And I see the gentleman already left, but it just-
I had a conversation with him.
It just has to do with-
Meet with him on Monday.
Okay.
I, I just brought up the agenda item because we all know what's going on at Centerville. But from talking to several folks in the county, it's not just an issue at Centerville. The facilities, we all know, our facilities are older. We need new facilities. We need remediation in a lot of facilities. But have we gone through, and we have a detailed list of every facility, of what is actually needed and what is going on? All the way to even like what he mentioned, to the utmost detail, so that we can look at it, or as, maybe not, but like, everybody can look at it, and we can put together a plan because we are in budget restraints. Completely understand that. But we can put together a plan and look at other ways. If, if the county or the state know how bad our facilities are, look for different funding levels or different ways to get the funding to remedy some of these situations, because it's not just Centerville. It's across the board. We have a lot of schools that are having a lot of issues right now. And I just haven't seen any reports or anything that actually shows what those issues are and how we're going about to fix it.
Sure. Good question. About five years ago, we had a third party come in and do an audit of every building from floor to the roof to the HVAC systems. And we have that all in a document that I can share with you or anybody that wants to see it that lists all of the ages of the equipment, the conditions the equipment is in. And we use that quite, we use that quite a bit when we're determining our CIP. As far as Centerville Elementary School is concerned, we did have BKM come in yesterday, who's an engineering firm, to go through the systems and what they're doing with that information. They're, they're coming back to us with, are the systems running correctly in the building? But with that, it's also gonna give us the monetary value to put into our CIP so that we can move that project up from two years away to maybe next year, you know, within that timeframe. But we, we do have that inventory that we use, the assessment, Wycomico County did it, and I was reviewing theirs. And the information on there that they have generated is incredible. So we piggybacked and did that with our school system about five years ago.
And how often are those audits usually performed? It's five years ago. Where are we at with trying to remedy some of those situations in that audit?
So when, when you look at the audit, it, it looks- So when, when you look at the audit, it, it looks at the facility as a whole. And then it takes it and tells you what the life cycle is of it, what the condition of it currently is. And then it gives you, you know, basically where you're supposed to go, kind of a roadmap. The difficult part for us when we do projects like this is getting the 51% from the state. You know, the county commissioners we have are very generous. But when it comes to dealing with the state and the ICE, putting together that information and getting that in front of them is like a multi-year process. But we're trying to speed that up with. Did you want to speak a little bit about their? Yeah, I mean, about how we're moving that forward with Centerville Elementary School? Because our next one also is Canard Elementary School. That we're doing a roof renovation along with HVAC, full renovation. Centerville Elementary School is a two-pipe system. So really, what you have in all of our other schools, except for two of them, it's a four-pipe system. So you can heat and cool, or you can dehumidify at the same time. Over here with a two-pipe system, it's, it's hard to dehumidify. And what, what occurs for ASHRAE standards, you had to bring in 10 to 20% outside air. So when you're home and your AC is running, it's the same air going over and over and over again. So if it's 100% outside humidity, we have to wring that moisture out of the air when it comes in. And that air in the classroom is recycled four times every hour. So the issue we had over there was with controls. We have two different systems, one stopped talking to that system, which is where we had issues within the two classrooms. But like I said, we are putting that, we'll have, what's that take, about three weeks or so? For them to do the report? I'm hoping to have something a little sooner. It should be about two weeks. I'm hoping a little bit sooner.
I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're being transparent with not only us, but the community as well. Because there's a lot of questions from the community. Because like I said, it's, it's district-wide. But at the same time, I, we haven't seen plans or a way ahead in those situations from the audit, or if we're going to do another audit or what's happening. It's just, it'd be nice to have a visual on seeing where we're at with those funds. And then that might be able to be presented to others that they could, because if we haven't seen, I'm sure others haven't seen it either. So I'm just trying to look for a way ahead that we can.
And we do share, we do share it with the county commissioners also and the county administrators. So they're aware of where we're at with those projects. Like I said, they're very good to us. You know, the hard battle is dealing with the IAC and the state getting that funding.
Yeah, following up on that, one of the, one of the key things that's come up in the last few years is just the increase cost in HVAC-related work. You know, what we had plugged in for Canard's HVAC project, going from, from some older historical data, we were looking at around a $3.6 million project. And we did a scope study and in order to, to complete that project and complete it right, because there's no sense in doing something 50% or 75% or even 60% or anything like that. I mean, we've got to go in and do everything 100%. In order to do Canard's HVAC, we're talking about a $6 million, $6.4 million project. So when you start asking the county commissioners for $3 million and then the state for $3.2 million for the 50/50 split, the, the state wants to fund all of the counties at a static amount every year. So they don't want to see these, these hills and valleys, just like the county commissioners don't. So they want to, they typically look at a five-year project allocation or five-year average. That's what they want to fund all of the LEAs on across each CIP. We're going to be in some challenging years coming up because we've got a couple of these HVAC systemic projects that are going to be a high priority. But we've also got Centerville Middle School that we want to look for about $20 million from the state for a $40 million new middle school. So it's going to be, it's going to be some challenging times trying to convince the state to fund these kind of projects, so.
All right, thank you.
I'll share it with you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And speaking of the CIP, we will be presenting the first blush of the CIP here in the next month or so, so that that's coming up.
Okay.
And those projects rotate on that, too, based on need. If something ends up breaking ahead of schedule or something like that, we're moving. I mean, that's what we're talking about with CES right now. You said that was two years out, but now reevaluating potentially.
Right, and that's two years out for funds to be available. And that, you know, so that typically means with funds being two years out, construction is three years out. So moving that ahead a year and getting that in 27 funding basically cuts it to being two years out instead of three years out, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Charter School Application Review.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Before we go? So I, I'll be frank here. I don't feel comfortable that what has transpired, that the administration being prepared, and obviously you guys weren't prepared and we thought something else was going to transpire. So I guess it would be a board decision, but if, you know, so you're, you're not to being put on the spot tonight and you, you know, can answer questions we have if you have the answers or not. But you obviously have nothing prepared because you didn't think you afforded the opportunity. Would they be able to present on the September 10th meeting? Since we want to be transparent with everybody and I feel like they, you know, obviously they, they weren't told or weren't aware and.
That's a board decision, but one thing that I would like to do, I understand that we all have questions. So if we could at least ask the questions and if at that time they want to come back with the answers.
Sure, if they want to.
We can do that, too, but I think we ought to at least, the superintendent is prepared to present their report. We all have questions. I think we should ask those questions. If they're not ready to answer, we all agree that we wouldn't vote until the next, that next meeting.
No, I just meant if they had additional things they wanted to present, if you couldn't answer them tonight because you, you know, obviously didn't know, so.
Yeah. That works.
Vice President Capes and President Bent, I thank you guys for this opportunity. We will gladly stay and answer questions in the capacity that we can tonight. We've not prepared any statements other than the three minutes that we had and the written material comments that we sent previously outlining several of the deficiencies that we saw. I'm happy to, we can certainly be prepared to present on the 10th and answer any other questions that you might have at that time.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Kibler, in your team room.
Great.
Mr. Bell.
We're gonna. So Mr. Bell is our charter school liaison, going to come up and then members represented the leadership of the two committees that worked on the application. So as we get, as we get into this, I do, I want to thank the committee here. I want to thank the applicants for, for what they put together and, and answering our emails when we, when we asked for additional documentation, coming to the capacity interview. I want to thank Mr. Bell for his leadership as the liaison, the charter school liaison, being our, our go-between here. As you can see, we have a team that represents the leadership of this review committee as well as a team behind that represents the individuals that worked on the application. I thank them all for their time and effort into this. And we'll let them go through the presentation that led to the recommendation that came from the committee. I prefer not to get into the, the back and forth, you know, of what was said, what, what we shared and, and didn't with the team. I'm happy with the decision to come back next week for a vote and to allow additional comments at that time, too. So I'd rather stick with that if that's all right.
That's fine. We'll be starting.
Presentation.
No, no, final report.
Good evening, President Bent, Dr. Kibler, members of the board and executive team. For the record, I'm Michael Bell, Supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts School Library Media, Title IV Part A, an MSD Fine Arts Grants Manager. I also serve on two state-level committees, including the State Superintendent's Fine Arts Advisory Panel. And I was honored to represent QACPS this year nationally as NAEA National Supervisor of the Year. Tonight, I'm here as the district's charter school liaison. In this role, my duty is to facilitate the charter school application process, coordinate logistics and ensure compliance with COMAR, MSD guidance and our board policy. I do not score or evaluate the application. That rests solely with the Charter School Application Review Committee or the CSARC, which I'll refer to them as this evening, comprised of 20 subject matter experts across curriculum and instruction, student services, operations, finance, facilities, human resources, school safety and more. This robust review team reflects the serious responsibility our district carries when an applicant seeks to open a public charter school under our umbrella. The process is intentionally rigorous. And it's intentionally rigorous because opening a charter requires innovation and meeting high standards in academics, finance, governance and operations. Those standards are set in Maryland law, not by me, not by the superintendent, not by this board. They're outlined in Education Article Section 9104 and in COMAR 13A010507. I assure you, this review was carried out fully in line with Maryland law and MSD's guidance. Several charter school application review committee members are also present in the back here this evening, including our CSARC team leads sitting here with me tonight, should the board wish to ask them any technical questions. At the end of the day, please note, the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate readiness. I will now proceed with a summary of the CSARC's team's findings, their recommendation to the superintendent and rationale behind them, which is part of the official record. With that said, our purpose is to give the board a transparent overview of the process, findings, final recommendation aligned with Maryland law, COMAR and MSD guidance. Our objective is to ensure that the board understands the basis of the CSARC's recommendation to the superintendent of denial, document due process and ensure that the board is prepared to provide a clear rationale when rendering their decision publicly, consistent with Maryland State Board of Education precedents. So our application timeline, here you can see documenting that we are fully in compliance with the 120-day requirement with September 3rd, tonight being day 112 of 120. Any action publicly taken up to September 12th in a public board meeting would satisfy COMAR and state law. As you can see, this process began March 1st. The formal application was submitted May 15th. Capacity interview was conducted July 31st. Supplemental submissions were also allowed going above and beyond COMAR requirements on August 7th and August 13th. The final report was submitted to the superintendent then on August 20th. Slides five through eight, they detail the CSARC composition. We've got 20 team members divided into Team A, which is academic and instructional. And then we have Team B, our governance and our operations. Each area of the application reviewed by experts in their field to ensure a thorough and comprehensive cross-functional review. So here's the scoring summary. Team A scored the applicant at 59.6%. Team B, 47.83%, with a composite of 56.9%, well below the threshold generally considered acceptable across Maryland general stations. Some key findings. There were three overarching ones in operational readiness, pre-K feasibility and financial sustainability. Now I want to pause on pre-K for a moment, all right? Because this is especially important. The blueprint of Maryland's future requires districts to expand access to high-quality, free, full-day accredited pre-K for eligible students. And accreditation isn't just a label. It's what allows districts to receive blueprint funding. And it ensures that all programs, public or private, meet the state's quality standards. QACPS has worked diligently to earn and maintain accreditation for every school serving pre-K in our district. In the applicant's August 13th supplemental submission, they chose to remove pre-K from their proposal after recognizing they could not meet the level of accreditation required and already in place within QACPS. While it may have mitigated the risk of implementing non-compliant early childhood programs, it actually narrowed the scope of their application and removed any claim of early childhood innovation, an area where QACPS is already leading. Additional deficiencies. So beyond those major areas, the team also found limited plans for special populations, including students with disabilities, English learners and undeveloped program alignment with Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards. Let's expand out on the academic and instructional deficiencies. So this boils down to, as you can see, boils down to lack of innovation, SEL, 21st century design, overemphasis on testing and sufficient plans for ELL and students with disabilities, all cited here. Spanning out our governance and operational deficiencies. Budget assumptions lack contingency planning. Facilities that would meet Maryland state standards were not secured and staffing timelines were not feasible. For example, even if they had a pre-K to one facility secured without a compliant outdoor activity area, for example, as required under COMAR for minimal usable play space, safety and maintenance, that would be a conflict within state standards and exactly the kind of operational risk the CSARC team flagged. The capacity interview. Interview score was 65.24%. The applicant's responses were often vague. Repeated application language did not reflect current best practices and failed to provide substantive solutions. Supplemental submissions. So for the record, QACPS and the CSARC team, they did go above and beyond for this board, allowing remote participation for one of the applicant's team members during the capacity interview, granting two separate opportunities beyond COMAR requirements for the applicant to submit additional materials to address unresolved areas and conducting a capacity interview that lasted more than two hours, longer than what is typical, with the interview questions provided well in advance so the applicant could prepare. Despite these accommodations, the deficiencies identified in the final report remained unresolved. Waivers. So the applicant also requested nine separate waivers. Take a look at them. Covering electronic devices, curriculum, staffing, procurement, facilities, naming rights and fundraising. For the public's knowledge, a waiver is essentially a request to be exempt from following QACPS board policy in a given area. While charters must still comply with state and federal law, these waivers would allow them to operate outside of district policy, effectively setting their own rules in these areas. So with that said, the CSARC found that even if granted in full, waivers could not cure structural deficiencies. And if the board does not follow the superintendent's recommendation, the CSARC team recommends each waiver be carefully reviewed and voted on individually as each one represents a significant departure from current board policy. So due process and transparency, that's come up a few times tonight. This process included technical assistance throughout. Any implication made to the contrary about me and my role is simply completely inaccurate. The process has included supplemental opportunities. Our review was completed in good faith within the 120-day window. These steps satisfy Step 7 of MSD's guidance and align with the Maryland State Board of Education precedent that denials must be more than conclusory. Now, we did say that the team found some positive attributes and that was noted earlier. Enthusiasm for the classical model, responsiveness to requests and a strong commitment to the idea of school choice. We loved that, everyone did. But the team also noted authorizing a charter school is not simply about approving an idea. It's assuming full responsibility for students, staff. It's assuming full responsibility for students, staff, the community, under our umbrella. That level of responsibility requires readiness, compliance, and sustainability, none of which were determined to be sufficiently demonstrated within their application. With that said, that leads us to the final recommendation. Based on the Charter School Application Review Committee's findings, the application was determined not to meet requirements under Maryland law and COMAR with deficiencies that were substantive and not remediable by conditions. The CSARC recommends denial to the superintendent. Should the board vote to deny the application, applicants would retain the right to appeal to the Maryland State Board of Ed within 30 days or reapply in May of 2026. This process completely fulfilled the Maryland Education Article Section 9104 with COMAR 13A010507 and with the MSD's Charter School Application Guide. We complied completely. The committee's written findings also align with prior Maryland State Board of Education opinions, which make clear that a local board must base its decision on substantive evidence in the record, which this committee has provided. I would like to thank President Bent. I would like to thank Dr. Kibler, members of the board, the QACPS Charter School Application Review Committee, and the Queen Anne's Classical Charter School applicant for their dedication to the process. At this time, this will conclude my presentation of the CSARC's review process and findings from within the final report. Penning any questions for the CSARC team, at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Kibler, who may share his recommendation to the board for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. So, as you saw, I've provided a letter and a recommendation. I don't know the right word to use, but I'll hold in the recommendation for denial of the charter school application for the reasons presented tonight.
What I would really like to do is to give the charter school team an opportunity to at least hear our questions. Even if they can't answer them, I do want to thank you guys for your time and effort in putting this presentation together and doing the review and the scoring. And, like I said, everybody else has had it just a little bit longer than we have, and it would be just beneficial to us before we can even think about voting one way or the other, if we are able to ask a few questions.
Do you have questions for the team while they're up here?
Actually, I don't. I don't know if anybody else on the board does.
I just had one, a quick one. They mentioned that with transportation, we'd see a savings. We wouldn't be able to change our bus routes at all, even if we dropped people off of them, would we?
I have that same question, but I had it for them.
Oh.
We can ask that question, too.
So even if we dropped 126 students off our transportation from all over the county, would it lower?
Possibly it would. It just all depends on where they're coming from. If we're sending a bus taking us up all the way up to, you know, three or four miles out of the way, then we cut that part out, then yes, you know? But it really depends on where.
The students are.
Okay.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks.
I'd say leave the chairs, just because I don't know how many people Thank you, ladies, for taking the time to answer a few questions. If you are not able to answer the questions right now, that's fine. But I do have a couple of my own, but we'll open it up to the team.
You guys want to start down there?
You always got the most questions, so go ahead. You'll probably seal all ours.
Um, I asked a question earlier, too. We were looking at the budget. I'm big on the budget. I've sat down with Matt, I've sat down with her, Dr. Kibler, I've sat down with everybody about the budget. Because we all know last year we had a lot of situations with the...
Mr. Gray, I don't mean to be rude, but can you speak up a little bit or plug into the mic? We can't.
It's the air conditioner.
Yeah, the air conditioner. So the budget's a big thing, too, and I look at typically the operational cost per student. Do you guys have that anywhere in your budget? Where your operational cost will be for the student? Because some of your budget things, there is a deficiency in the budget that we don't see a lot of the members. You guys are relying a lot on fundraising. Sometimes that's not the most capable way of going about trying to find a budget and find funding. So I'm just curious if you guys have that cost where you guys need to be and moving forward, along with the cost per student that it's going to actually take. I know those numbers can't be 100% because you don't have a facility yet, you don't have some of the other things, but you have a rough idea of where you're going with that?
We don't have that information in front of us, specifically talking about funding. But part of, once a charter is granted, we would negotiate the amount per pupil that the charter school would receive and the amount per pupil that would stay with QACPS in the budget. So that would not be designated until after a charter is granted. And the recent case from last week with Frederick Classical Charter School, Maryland State upheld that there isn't an allotted amount for funding per pupil that says a charter school gets this amount and the public school system gets another amount.
I'm a little bit more, basically, there isn't a fight. The Maryland State Board said that districts are not allowed to just arbitrarily take a 25% off of the pupil amount, which would typically be the 25% that you spend on your central office expenses. So where that comes into play is, like, the charter school can negotiate buyback services from the school district. So in order for the school district to keep more funding, they can provide certain services for us that are already taking place. Example, payroll processing, certain things that wouldn't add an additional cost for the school district, but would allow the school district to keep additional funds.
So, actually...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Very quickly, I do want to let you guys know that we are more than happy to, anything that we discuss tonight, provide copies of case law to back up stats, facts, and figures this evening. And we can provide that in writing to the board, as well as present to you on the 10th.
Perfect, thank you.
I would like to make just a comment, which has disturbed me somewhat. And I appreciate the fact that the review committee found us robust and enthusiastic, but they never once mentioned qualifications. And the qualifications of the board members with Sean Kenner's participation is qualifications beyond what is, I would think, usually expected. And that qualifications were exemplary in the fact that we exceeded anything that any other application was able to provide. Because we've reviewed other applications and we've visited almost several charter schools in the state. And the qualifications of our board far exceed those that are existing in other boards. And I just think that that needs to be recognized. We've worked very, very hard to create a board that is worthy of this project.
So, I...
Oh, sorry, just to elaborate on that, our lawyer did submit a written comment to you today. I don't know if you've received that and/or have read it, but it expounds on that. We can go into further detail. I also just very quickly wanted to make a comment about quasi-judicial review and well as ex parte communications. Because this is the first time that we have been allotted a chance to talk to the board. And the state makes very clear that this process should be collaborative. And oftentimes jurisdictions come and speak, or charter school applicants come and speak to a board multiple times.
During the process.
What I am, but furthermore, I have noticed that there have been three members of the review team in closed-door meetings. And I am not, I want to make sure that with conversations with council and the board members, that they are, they were not excused, to my knowledge, on August 6th or previously, before the reports have been written. And I do just want to make sure that that process, if we are going to be transparent and make sure that board members or an ex parte communication is not being, happening, that this process is being held up to all process standards.
Thank you.
May I say something?
No, well, which board? Yeah.
Which board? I'm not understanding. Can you elaborate on what you mean? I think we're all confused.
Talking about our closed session?
In our closed session.
The board of education's closed session?
That's correct. According to the minutes on August 6th, the Assistant Superintendent, the Director of Human Resources, and the Inner Room Supervisor of Finance were all present in that closed-door session while there was conversations about the charter school. They also serve as part of the review team, and they were not excused during conversations with the board.
I can address that.
Were they?
Can I clarify? Yeah, during closed session, we just cover specific topics, including legal advice. Legal advice related to the charter school application, just about process, not about substantive aspects of the application, the merits, anything like that. So it's just legal advice about the process, the timelines, the statute, and that's it. So there's nothing, you know? I understand your concern seeing them on there, but I can assure you that the confidential closed-session legal advice is pertaining to just process-related legal advice, nothing substantive about the conversation or about the application.
I do appreciate that, and...
I see where you're going.
For the public's knowledge, your law firm has done that process publicly in other jurisdictions. And so I just want to make sure that we're all aware because I have not been made aware of what, obviously, was said in those conversations because it is a closed-door meeting.
I understand. I understand your concern. Thank you.
I get that you want to speak, but I really need to ask a question. So, one of the things, so we just want to get back to the charter school and the fact that you want to establish one. I am the District 1 representative. That's North County. The front page or the front, several pages of the charter school application noted that you were starting Centerville to the Bay Bridge. That's three out of four districts in Queen Anne's County. If this is supposed to be available and equitable to all Queen Anne's County students, how come North County was not included? In your...
I'm not sure what you're asking. Are you looking at facility?
I'm looking at the ability for every family in this county to be able to participate. And it doesn't look like that's what you're focusing on. It looks like you're focusing on a specific set of areas for three out of four of the districts in this county.
We have absolutely tried to maintain community outreach and support across the entire county, making sure, because the report, in fact, states that our students, we only have 8,000 students. And I highlighted in my written testimony about our charter schools and in rural areas, such as Settlersville, and how it is just as important that we're talking about rural areas and making sure that we are paying attention to those students just as much as we are talking about students at Ken Island and Centerville, those more populous districts. I want to make very clear that we are looking at students across our entire county, not just in those densely populated areas.
Every family will have an opportunity to apply. The selection, however, will be strictly on a lottery basis, over which we do not even have the control. So every family who wishes to apply for the lottery is eligible to apply. There's no geographic requirement, none whatsoever, except a county resident.
Great, but if the potential locations are three in Ken Island and one in Queenstown, I mean, that's going to limit everybody in the North County.
Well, can I respond to that? We were, I don't have my material, so I can't look at it and say this is exactly the point. But in part, that came about out of a discussion of where might there be a facility? And facilities have to be located in areas where you have access to water and sewer. And so the gentleman we're working with, who's on our board, Barry Waterman, who not only is a realtor, but is a developer, has already spoken with officials at the county to talk about what, where are the areas that are most available, most likely to be available, where our facility might be able to go. This is very preliminary, obviously. And I didn't get a chance to repeat what we had already submitted on our plan, the research that we've done. But that was the initial discussion of where the locations might be was really to say between the Bay Bridge and Queenstown because that's where there's the best opportunities right now for, you know, the construction of the facility. So the Settlersville presents an interesting dilemma, and as Ashley has said, our marketing is going to be extensive, and we particularly know we need to get to, what you're referring to is North County. And that's the kind of issues that if we had had an opportunity to have a consultative process, a collaborative process, we could have sat down and talked about that. And we could certainly use your thoughts and other thoughts about how do we do that? How do we make that work? Because I don't think we could put the facility in Settlersville, although that was the first school that was brought to our attention when that was still available. It, we know that's a unique situation, and we have to, we have to address it. So I just don't think what was in the report was probably explained fully in terms of how we happen to identify those areas.
Also, just for your information, we were generously somewhat donated land to us for the school. And Mr. Waterman told us that it wasn't suitable because it didn't have water and sewer. And we were really disappointed, you can imagine.
Do you have, speaking about students and how many students you want to start off with, do you guys have solicited information from parents who actually would sign their name and have put it on a petition saying they would essentially put their name in for a lottery? Do you have, how many people or how many students would be willing to go?
You don't have to touch that. Use it if you press the button.
We do. We have a petition with well over 200 names. We also have had parents and community support. You have received over, I know, over 50 letters. I can provide letters that have been forwarded to us. Some people have, some people haven't. I know some of those people are parents who've said, "I'm a parent." I myself am a parent, and I would love to send my kids here. That's, you know, part of the reason why I'm on this board. Because I look at this as another school opportunity, educational opportunity for our students. Education isn't a one-size-fits-all box. And students, whether we have 80,000 students in our district or 8,000 students, those students deserve a choice. And they deserve a high-quality choice in their education. I think that our application has shown capacity, not readiness, as our charter liaison said inappropriately, incorrectly, earlier today. It's not readiness. It's capacity. They, the report talks about and quotes, makes vague quotes, and tells, says that our answers were vague, but fails to provide any documented evidence of what those answers were. I wanted to make one other point about, about the... I don't, I'm sorry. I just lost my train of thought. It does, but I mean...
I just kind of want to follow... I just kind of want to follow up on her capacity comment, because if we are talking about capacity, your school, according to the application, would only go up to grade eight.
That's correct.
So at that time, those students would have to transfer to one of the high schools, and by grade 10, they need to be career and college-ready.
That's correct.
How are you planning to do that?
We're planning, first of all, I'd like to point out an error in the report, which said we had nothing about college and career readiness. We provided a matrix that had the alignment of all of the curriculum to the state standards on college and career readiness. So that, I just want to make that clear, that we are not certainly trying to overlook that. We would develop the programs that would be appropriate for the age level of the student. And remember, we're going to build on, you know, one grade a year as we go up, so we would be structuring a program that could provide them, that's generally accepted as being effective, and could provide them what they would need in those early grades. And quite honestly, I have to confess, I don't know exactly what they need in those early grades myself, but I do know that there's, you know, you start with, you start actually fairly early on this whole effort, and that's important, and we understand that, so.
We have to meet the standards, the Maryland State standards as well, and we can't just skip over that. And primarily, we're going to start with foundational skills, it's just in a different way. We're still going to hit the standards, we have to, and the children still have to take the state-mandated tests, we have to. So by the time they get to going into the, you know, feed into the high schools, they're going to have the same requirements as, as children that go to QACPS now. It's just in the manner of how they receive that learning and that knowledge, how it's delivered. And I think we're going to go much deeper in smaller, smaller pieces.
Hi, Claire. Oh, sorry, I just wanted to say, I think a lot of these issues of clarif- and points of clarification could have been addressed earlier, had the, had our liaison and the team worked in a collaborative environment. The state looks very highly on collaboration, and I don't necessarily think we were afforded that opportunity. Quote, "The local school systems have a vested interest in being active and supportive throughout the charter school application process, as it will benefit students, faculty, and staff in the event a charter is granted." A lot of this could have been discussed and ironed out before we were meeting today. And when we discussed things like facilities and questions, it wasn't until the capacity interview, which, as I pointed out, the date happened a month after the stated date on the application. But the other thing I did want to point out was, when we talk about capacity and readiness, charter schools, after a charter application is granted, it often takes 12 to 18 months before we open those doors. There is a lot of things that are ironed out between the school system, QACPS, and the charter school in that time. It's not a, "We opened our doors today" situation, or tomorrow situation. There are multiple things that are ironed out in that process, negotiated, and there had we, we have tried to be collaborative in this entire process, even talking about pre-K and removing that. That one thing we offered pre-K, because the community and the public asked for pre-K, they wanted more pre-K opportunities. We said, "Fine, we will remove it until our charter, charter school is established, and then talk about that." The, the report talks about opening in 2026, we're happy to collaborate and say, "Hey, you know what? If our charter isn't grant, is granted today, we can potentially negotiate to open in 2027." That is something that we would happily have worked with the team to talk about collaborating, but that wasn't afforded to us throughout this entire process. Even after we multiple times talked to our liaison and questioned him about facilities, we were shut down. We, there was no assistance given on certain aspects. We could have, when they say we didn't provide a high-quality application, guidance, Maryland State guidance says that our, our charter liaison could have provided high-quality applications, and he didn't. I, I want to talk about, you know, it's not
We're, we're, we're asking
We're asking questions.
And if you can answer them, great, if not, we have, we are going to be back here again in a week, so that there will be that time. So right now, we have questions. And again, if you don't have an answer, you don't. Along with the letters of support that we had, we also had letters that were not in support and had questions, and as elected officials, it is our job to express those interests of the community. And some of the concerns that other parents had that don't plan on sending their children to the charter school, obviously want to know how it's going to affect their child, who's already, as we all know, there are certain things that they're limited to because of the accessibility, reading specialists, and certain things like that. Children, kids that are having language issues, kids with IEPs, kids with disabilities, what is the plan? Not asking for it, is there a plan? How does that, if everything is equal opportunity, how does a charter school tend to that when we're already sharing? Like, do you all plan to share our specialists, our tutors? Like, I mean
Right.
I mean, like, how, that, that in my opinion negatively impacts the kids that are already trying to get in with those people that they're struggling, and that's kind of where I'm at, as a parent of a child already in public schools here. I'm worried about the kids that are already in school and how they're going to get access to the support that they need so desperately, if they're now sharing it with another school that is, they're just going to by choice. Not saying that there, there are also parents that want to, but we have to recognize the fact that parents have concern over the transportation, northern portion of the county, the specialists, how the behavior occupational speech, how that all handles out when you're already dealing with one reading specialist between several schools. And then, obviously, like, the lottery system, I, I wonder how, like, if you do a lottery system and say, for example, you have a child that has a lot of needs, you say you can't come because we can't, it's like, right, so again, these are all big questions that I know you don't have the answers to now, and it's not about how much does that cost, but how does a school like that, when you're part of a community, when you're already, when you're joining into an already existing school system, how did you share our resources when we're already grappling for them where we are today at this time? These are the communities, these are questions our community has.
Those are, and they're excellent questions. The issue of sharing the resources, particularly in the special ed area, that you already have or that already exists, is part of this concept of a buyback. And we're going to be a very small school, you know, for several years, and so the idea is to sit down with you and see if there is a viable way to do that out of the per pupil allocation that we will get. If there's not, then we will provide that service. We will go out and, and find professionals that can provide that service, and bear that cost, you know, fully as best we can. But that's exactly the kind of thing that would be benefited from, and will benefit from sitting down and talking about, how, how can this work? And this is one of the questions, quite honestly, I raised right from the very beginning, because we had to put a budget together, and I needed to know, you know, why are you willing to do that, and what, what would the dollars look like? And I, I frankly didn't get an answer. I was told, "Well, that'll be determined when you're in your contract negotiation." That didn't help me prepare my budget, so, but those are the kinds of things that we realistically consider. I understand the parents' concern, so we would want to sit down with you, we'd want to spell it out, want to see what the dollars are to do that. I think the advantage of the buyback for certain things, and this may not be one of them, if you're already stretched, is that it allows the district to keep more of the per pupil allocation. We would be, and this was the Frederick decision that Ashley just mentioned, the charter school has to have the opportunity to negotiate over those services, over, you know, the 25%, which is the max, I guess. So, we, the buyback would, could afford the district an opportunity to have more of those funds, as opposed to just filtering them all out to us, and as I say, we're a small school, we're very cognizant of that, and we're going to be, you know, year by year, so that makes the, the buyback option more significant for us, so.
I'm sorry. Mr. Rob, can you explain? Because this whole buyback thing does not make sense to me. I don't understand, if I've got $100, and we're already struggling with that $100.
Sure, let's, let's say we're, let's say that the final number is $2 million, and they would like to have access to our Power School program, our e-finance program, or like to access our buses, or any of the other resources that we might have, our audiologists, they would, then we would negotiate a rate that is commensurate to what it would be for the per pupil expenditure. So, say, say Power School, there might be a $2,500 charge for them to buy into our system. There might be some administrative costs as part of this buyback to, for finance to help with some, some parts of that. If, if buses are part of that, they could buy, we could, they could be in a negotiation with transportation. That's how, that's how the buyback works.
Well, that falls into the requirement of pillar five of 75% of the per pupil funding has to be at each school, that would, that 25%. 75% of the per pupil funding would go to the charter school, the 25%, we could negotiate back with you to help you percentage it, to meet that 25%.
Basically just buyback resources.
We don't have that, that's my point. We're already talking about That's, that's, I think, a different question, if I may say.
What's happening is the student is going to our school, however, you're still receiving a portion of that student's funds. And depending on what services, for instance, Power School, we would then buy, we would buy a port, a portion of Power School, so we would then give you money back.
So are you intending that you're just going to take students out of the current 14 schools and become our 15th school? Or are you intending that maybe with the existence of the charter school, you bring back kids that are in private school, or kids that are homeschooled? That would actually increase the numbers and bring in more money to the county, as opposed to taking existing money that's already in and spreading it out?
Absolutely, I wrote that in my testimony, that, in my written testimony, and I said, you know, we would, we would bring in kids that, often students have the means to do so, opt out of the public school system. Having robust options, including private and homeschool opportunities, are fantastic opportunities, but wouldn't it be great to bring some of those students back into the public school system?
How do you do that if it's a lottery system?
So they, so we would market to all students within Queen Anne's County, and those parents who have decided to opt out and perhaps are homeschooling, they choose to apply, they choose to put themselves in the lottery. And so when we choose the lottery, that student could get the winning lottery ticket of those 100 kids, for instance, that are coming to our school. But they're choosing the opportunity to come to the charter school as opposed to opting out.
Where legally, we can't guarantee any, who, any of the students that would potentially end at the charter school, because it is
It's still kind of a question mark, right? Like, it's like, yes, in an ideal world, you get 200 kids that are homeschooled or in private school, but it's a lottery, so it's like, it's, it's
Right. The other thing is
Special education student, that's very costly to educate at our school, and the Queen Anne's County schools might not have to bear that expense. So it is, it's a give-and-take lottery as well, right? Like, it would, it all just depends on the lottery and what the actual enrollments are.
And the audience this evening, there were homeschool parents here who have already contacted us. There were private school parents here this evening who have already contacted us. We've told them all, it's a lottery, it's open to everyone in the county, and we do not have the say on who is selected from the lottery. But their willingness to sign up and take that risk is very, very real. So, you asked how, you know, we know that parents are interested. This is an anecdote, but it happens to me almost weekly or daily, I get phone calls asking, "When are we going to open?" And I get stopped at Safeway or the post office, "When are we going to open?" People are very interested and very desirous of having a choice and having a classical charter school, which has already, the reputation has preceded it. We don't have to convince people that a classical charter school is going to increase the proficiency of their students.
And it could increase the, it could increase scores for Queen Anne's County public schools as well, as a whole, because it is, it is a public, it is part of Queen Anne's County public schools. So whatever good stuff that happens is also going to reflect on Queen Anne's County public schools.
Chairman Bent said something before, will this be the 15th school? And yes, this will be the 15th school. It's part of the public school system, it's a public school.
That the Board of Education would oversee, as opposed to QACPS, we would be autonomous, however, we would still be overseen by the Board of Education in Queen Anne's County. I do believe that at least one private school parent that I know has written a letter of support. I can go back and, and look at our materials from the ones that, the letters that I've received, to see if others have.
One, how would you say?
Well, I do know of at least one, yes.
When you mentioned, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
No, go, go ahead.
You, when you mentioned that, can you talk to us about waivers? I know there was a lot of requests for waivers, so.
Yes, so these waivers, they're not, they're standard, and they allow us to be autonomous. They're, they're, if we didn't have these waivers in place, we would have to come to the board to get, to request everything from chairs to, to curriculum approval.
But that's the point.
But that's the point of this board.
That's not, so charters are allowed to be autonomous and work within a different set of rules. This is, none of the waivers that we asked for are out of line of any other charter school in Maryland.
And yet legally available.
I'm happy to share other evidence with what the other, with the waivers that other charter schools in Maryland, especially classical charter schools, because there are many within Maryland, what waivers they have sought. The guidance and waivers that we were asking for were written and have been with consultants, and consultants were not asking for anything out of the ordinary.
May I, may I try to respond a little bit? Two thoughts, I guess, but one on this question of the waivers. The charter school law, which was adopted, I guess, in 2003, the intent was to provide equivalent funding, comparable funding, to a school that will bring something to the table, and in the process, enrich the offerings within a county, and allow parents to have an alternative. The school would be given certain latitudes to do that, as opposed to having to, you know, get all our procurement approved, et cetera, et cetera, and that's, that's just understood. In return for that, we get, we do not get any money for a facility, separate from what comes in the per pupil. We don't get any money for transportation, so all of that has to be paid out of the per pupil, even though that's not really at a comparable level with what a public school is getting on a per pupil basis. So, it is a, it's a weird animal, and it was intended to be something different, and allow a school to exist that is really contributing to the overall educational program within a county, but have certain latitudes to have a program, curriculum, for example, and a culture and teaching virtues, for example, some of the things that we do, that is somewhat different. So, I didn't, you know, it's a, there's a long history about charter schools got started in somewhere in the Midwest, when a legislator, state legislator, or whatever introduced a bill to do this, and that was the idea. Let's provide some more choice, let's do that in a way that is equitable in the sense of comparable in funding with the public schools, but it's not, it's not exact, and so there's a big gap, you know, there potentially for us to do that. But I, and I think so, part of that trade-off, if you will, is some autonomy in, in certain areas. So it's not, you know, it's not for want of a direction and guidance from the board, but it's sort of baked into the program. In terms of the dollars, I've asked several people like the Maryland Alliance for Public Charter Schools, how do you answer this question of the dollars? And are they taking away, are charter schools taking money away from the public schools? And I guess one answer to that is a simple answer. You'd have to educate these children if we didn't. Okay, right? Presumably, I mean, their children would live in the county. So that's part of the answer. Is that we're not taking money away. This is money that's being shifted to us that you would otherwise have to spend to educate a child.
It's the same student, it's just a different seat. It's within the school system. It's still the school system. It's still your students.
Right, just sitting in a different seat. And our payments and our expenses don't go down because we lose five students at a school, though.
Right.
So that's the problem. So in a county that's already seriously hurting for money and teachers and physicians and.
Specialists.
Yes, specialists, reading tutors, you heard everything tonight. It's really hard to think about spreading resources and money.
Well, that's, that's why the buyback concept was developed. And so we could, you know, clearly you have some resources, perhaps, that where you would be able to share with us, whether it's, I don't know, what's called the power.
And one example, you shouldn't have to hire another.
That's a very real issue that I know you're struggling with and not just now, but past years. And it's not going to go away next year. I mean, it's a major issue. However, the approval of our charter is not based on finances. That will be appealed at the state. It's not a basis for denial.
This is just my comment. Because it was leaning towards the per pupil funding and I just had, I realized that that's not. And to be honest, we do know that it cannot be a reason, too. That's what my thing is, is money aside, right now, the reality is, is we aren't able because of our current position, which we are making strides to get away from, we are already stretched thin with the resources that we have. It just happens to be that money pays for those resources. Like, it's just the reality is what it is, that you have to worry about what's the collateral damage of sharing those resources. And the children in this county are our priority. And make sure that they get what the current students of this county and getting what they need is our priority first and foremost. The wishes and wills of the people in terms of their children, they can go to a private school. They have options. I'm not saying that we're not, that, I'm just simply saying, right now, we have to focus. That's our concern and why we're asking our questions. And hopefully, now that you've kind of heard some of ours, there's a week's opportunity to come with things that help alleviate concern.
Ideally, the goal is to be collaborative, wait, these are the same students. And it does present some opportunity, like, to educate them at a lower cost overall, which would save the district money overall.
But it doesn't because we still have the fourteen schools with other students there that are still. You take those two, you still got this desk and the rest of us still have to be.
But that means you, there could be, like, the classroom sizes will get, potentially get smaller, for example. You might have to not go pick up that one student that was five miles out of the bus route at all. Once again, it's based on the enrollment of whoever is in the charter school.
Where does the funding for the teachings, where does, how does, how does staffing get, how does staffing get?
It's paid out of the per pupil amount that we would get, which is that combination of state.
And Maryland charter schools are required to pay their teacher, the teachers are within their same negotiated agreement rate.
Yep.
So, so right now, where we already don't have the ability to hire more teachers, we would have to hire more teachers.
Well, we would be, we would be hiring the teachers, but it has to be consistent.
Hiring, I just mean, like, we would, there would be all of a sudden now the expense of more teachers when we already can't get enough teachers for the students that we have.
To begin with, we only need six teachers. I mean.
Oh, my gosh, I have schools right now that would love to have one.
We're starting off with two classes for each of three grades. Whether it's pre-K, we start with, or K. The consideration to drop the pre-K was really in consideration of your needs. We were told that the funding in the blueprint for pre-K is different and that that's a real issue and a real concern. We are willing to.
It's not, it would be our needs. That's the thing. I mean, like, the one comment that we find accreditation important, it's not that it's important, it's a law. And that's, and that's why we gave that recommendation. So if you're a fifteenth school, it's not that we want you to be accredited. You need to be accredited. So there's been a lot of comments that it's something that we want. It's something that we have to have. And I want to make sure that.
We want to be accredited. We do not want to have a class or a school that is not accredited for the basic reason of accreditation. It's a value and it shows that you're doing things right.
Exactly.
You can't be accredited until you have a class and you have a program. At our interview with Dr. Bell and the committee, we were asked, we were told that our application was negligent and lacking a special ed plan. But you can't do a special ed plan until you know who your students are, whether the needs are for a child in a wheelchair or a child that's nonverbal or a child that's blind. So you.
But you gotta have a blueprint for one.
Yeah, you don't do your plan until you know who your students are. We will know who our students are in March and plenty of time.
I understand that.
To develop a special ed plan.
You also know the makeup of students and you can do research to see what the needs of students might be coming to our school to have a plan to address the certain areas rather than just saying, Comar, we'll follow Comar. So just offering advice for as you come back next week.
Yeah, we have, and we have, we understand what needs to be done to meet the needs of special education students and the laws. And so in terms of not having a plan, we understand all of that and we know we have to have professionals, whether it's through buyback or individually, that can carry that out, teachers that know how to do that, the support professionals, et cetera. The point was, I think the feeling we had in the capacity interview was, well, you got to be ready for whoever comes through the door. And our point was, well, we don't know who's going to come through the door. So we're going to hire somebody for a child having a condition that we end up not having that show? We have plenty of time, we think, between the lottery enrollment and the start of school. This is based on the current schedule. That, you know, we could work on and implement an IEP or the multi-language learner plan or whatever.
So I've been trying to ask a question for quite some time. And this is going into the enrollment. When are you having the lottery so that they know or you know who the students will be for the following year?
So the lottery would happen, so once our charter would be granted, then we would negotiate all of our charter agreement within thirty days. And we could, at that time, grant a conditional charter and negotiate opening in 2026 or 2027. But looking at a likelihood of opening, say, in 2026, we would have our lottery in February or March of 2026. And then we would open our doors in September of 2026.
And Mr. Dreya, we do not conduct the lottery. It is done by an independent.
I'm just asking, when you guys plan on.
It's done by.
It would be in February of next year.
So that's substantial time for if you went after or.
Exactly.
Private schools or homeschool, that they still have the ability if they are not selected in the lottery, whatever their choice may be. Because I know in public schools, we can take them anytime.
Have to.
Yeah, have to by law. So I'm just making sure we are covering those bases and it's not like, hey, in August, you know. So whenever I'm looking at this now and we say, they don't have the timelines or, this might be a question for you, Matt, or Dr. Kibler. There's not timelines or there was situations where they didn't think they were sufficient in their answers. Who makes those, where are those timelines at? What was the basis on those timelines that you said they didn't have a facility or they didn't have this program if they didn't know the students? I'm just asking, who makes those timelines or what was the timelines that they were justifying their answers to?
I don't, I don't want to say to the timeline. I think the issue is, when we ask about special populations, the answer is, we will follow the requirements in Comar. There is, there, we, the team, and I can be corrected, felt like responses lacked depth to go into giving examples. Well, what would we do if we had a student in a wheelchair? You know, we, we could address some of those things. And that's kind of, if it's all right, just a segue. What I want to say is, naturally, when you see a recommendation of a denial, it's going to set up, upset feelings. And this conversation has turned, I think, cordial and a nice back and forth. It started adversarial. And I hope that when we come back and we keep going tonight and come back next week, that you focus on where we identify the deficiencies instead of attacking my staff and the process. Because what I'd like to offer to you as advice, I'm a reasonable, rational person. Some of you at the table know me. I feel like when we have done the concept proposal, given you feedback, received an application, set up a capacity interview with questions, then ask again, follow-up to those questions for additional depth. What I see coming back is what comes across as a repetition of the same words, maybe in a slightly different way, with not going into depth in your responses to address those deficiencies. That's what I'm seeing personally. And that's what, if we are on the special ed example, to continue that, that's where you could go with the plan. And you could address the needs and how you would deal with students with certain conditions. You could give examples of that. I feel like just saying, for all areas, we will follow Comar, that gives us pause. And so that's kind of where I'm at. So I'm hoping that we can continue on this type of conversation, get away from attacking my team, who has spent an enormous amount of time on this project, to try to come to a reasonable decision on your application as they see fit as professionals in the field. And we can focus on where we identify the deficiencies instead of attacking the people that put the responses back to you. You made one comment earlier about, we were told there might be a meeting in a week. We don't even know what time. It might be arranged four to six. That's because I am, I do want to be transparent. As soon as I got word from Ms. Bent that we might want to have another meeting, I went to my charter school liaison and said, let them know right away. Put it on their calendar. I don't even know what time it's going to be. We always start sometime between four and six. Let them know it's going to be ready. So I want to get away from that and focus on the deficiencies, not on the process and trying to slander or just knock my people down. We are all in this for the children. I understand if I got, if I spent the time that you all spent putting on that application and then I see a recommendation of denial, I would go right into defense mode. I appreciate that. But I feel like from the concept proposal to application to capacity interview to the follow-up that we asked twice, we are, we are just not getting the depth in responses that we would like to see to be able to put this forward to recommend approval of the application. And I would encourage you over the next week to do that. I also think you are prepared tonight for a presentation. We're seeing that because we ask a question and we go from question to, well, let me throw this point in, let me throw this point in. So I do think there was some preparedness to speak tonight. And I go back to the email and I see that you were told that that was going to potentially happen. I can't speak for the board. I'm the secretary treasurer. They're my boss. I don't know if they're going to come up and ask you to make a presentation or respond to it. We told you to be ready because they might. What I could guarantee as superintendent is that there was public comment twice on the agenda and you all could talk, and you did. And I'm happy that you did. Now you're getting time to engage here. You'll get time to engage next week. I'm just asking, focus on the depth of your responses so that we can make an informed decision on the application.
I also would like to say that we have told people that tonight, that are watching, that we would like to get feedback from the community as well because I think this is a very open conversation on concerns or things as well. So we might bring some more questions to you on it. But things that are huge are obviously transportation, accessibility, the specialists, just how it's all going to work. I mean, I know you don't have the answers, but you, you, I feel like you could build some sort of skeleton to give us an idea based on other examples. If you've gone to several charter schools in the state that you went to recently, what are they doing? I mean, something is better than we'll figure it out.
I think that.
And I, and I don't want to serve one percent of the county to sewer the other ninety-nine percent.
So one of the things, and I'm just, I worked a bit on the application, so in the grunt work. And in looking at it, there were, there were a lot of things that I felt were kind of not clear. And so I'm really glad that Superintendent Kibler had said something about giving examples because I don't think that that was something that was really clear to us that we, that that would be something you would want to hear from us. Well, if we have a child that's, give a descriptor, this is what we would do. We, we weren't very clear about that.
And it could be the application itself because one of the questions that I had was around, how would you take care of a child with a peanut allergy? Do you have a nurse? What kind of qualifications do they have? There's been a whole section thing that came up recently that we have a kid that has an EpiPen. We have another kid that has an allergy that we don't know about. But because they don't have a plan already in, they've got to wait for an ambulance. That's not accessible, that's not acceptable. And we need to be able to take care of both of those children. So that's not on the application.
And it wouldn't be because we were very limited on how much space we were allowed in that. So within that, I mean, as we speak to you, we can talk, but we only were permitted to have a certain specific amount. So if we tried to give examples of all of these different things, it just wouldn't have happened. We just came right under, right at that level.
So at this point, I'm asking.
So that's why it's great that we can talk with you all.
Please provide that when you come next time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I appreciate that because it's good to know that if we provide written responses to some of your concerns that have been expressed this evening next Wednesday, that there's not a limit, that we have to limit it to fifty words or that we have to limit it to a certain number of pages.
We, we would like to request because we will be next Wednesday that we don't get these written responses or some of this information Tuesday evening because we all have lives and our, our, our normal jobs that we would like to review them at the same time. So I'm not trying to put pressure on, but sooner the better so that we can actually review and gain an understanding of it because coming in on Monday or Tuesday night is not suitable for any of us because we have families and such as well.
Absolutely, we agree. And that's one of the reasons why those of us who submitted written testimony, written comments, like myself, who had multiple pages, I submitted that on Thursday. I believe Kate submitted a testimony on the, or written comments on Friday morning that had multiple pages. And we will absolutely work to give you as much information as possible, really trying to concentrate and formulate. Because I do think, even though they came back and asked us questions, it was just bullet points. We still have problems noting deficiencies in this area with a bullet point, this area with a bullet point, as opposed to really trying to figure out what portion of that area that they had a problem with or how we could best describe and answer the question.
So is that when you talk about the collaboration that you feel like you didn't receive?
Absolutely.
So you're saying an example of when they said you had a deficiency instead of saying, hey, look, this is something to do with the food process. This is what we found work for us because we made these mistakes in the past. Let us help you. Are you saying that's the type of collaboration that didn't happen?
Absolutely. There was, it was, here is your application, here are the noted deficiencies and this is this bullet point in this area, this area, this area, as opposed to really trying to address what questions we could iron out and talk about and really expand upon in our answers. I mean, the, when we talk about this, there should have been, and oftentimes, unless we came and asked specific questions, the answers weren't given to us. And a lot of that wasn't until I really started perusing a lot of what was going on and that we could ask for more information.
Okay.
I think we're all due to this, too.
May I respond to Dr. Kibler? Because I'm very concerned about the points he was making about how we were referring to his staff and how much work they did. And I did try to, to recognize that. We know that they did a lot of work. We did a lot of work getting all that paper to them, so we're aware of that. And people were, I think, very professional in the way that they handled it. We were very, we were disappointed, of course. And we were very surprised by things that were claimed to be a deficiency, which clearly. We were very, we were disappointed, of course, and we were very surprised by things that were claimed to be a deficiency, which clearly weren't. So there was indication to us that the application hadn't been read very carefully. And so one of the suggestions or comments that was made, if we had had an opportunity to respond to that set of recommendations in a different environment than we're going to do now, that would have been very helpful, because you're, you know, we're in this together, and we absolutely agree with that. We're not competing with you, we don't want to criticize, we need your input because of your experience. But we, you know, I think you put your finger on it, we're trying to figure out how to come back, respond in a way that is meaningful.
I, I get it, but we're going right back in the same direction I said before.
Okay. We've asked questions, you've gave us some answers. There are some that you didn't give us, that we look forward to getting those in written prior to... Can we, today's Wednesday. Even if you send them over the weekend, that would be great, because, you know, like you said, I was late today, because I was on the other side of the bridge. So everybody's got, you know, lives and families. In the, I'm very sorry, in the essence of time, because I gotta get up early tomorrow, I'm gonna say, are there any final comments from the board? Because I think that we have exhausted this at this point. We know what they're gonna provide us, and when they're gonna provide it, and we will move forward. And next Wednesday, at 4:00, 4:30? Oh, man.
Leave early.
I left at 3:00. And I was 3:00. Okay, so next Wednesday, at 4:30, we will reconvene. I guess there'll be a small session of answering the questions that we, the answers that we receive, if we have any more, maybe a little bit of discussion, and then a vote on the application.
Will we be able to make a presentation, or will it strictly be Q and A?
Please, I think a presentation would be great, personally. I believe up the board, but I think a presentation, a visual.
Personally, I don't, it's not that I don't want to hear about how wonderful, because it's not about how wonderful it is, it's the, it's the logistics. So I don't want, personally, I don't want a presentation about all the benefits of a classical school. I want to hear the logistics of it, because I, I'm sure it is wonderful. It's just...
Speaking about the merits of the application.
The actual nuts and bolts of it.
There you go.
And presenting what our questions were. So if that's a presentation we want to have, is have it in our presentation, answering the questions and the deficiencies that we've asked and they've had that you want to answer, that'd be helpful, instead of just a Q and A, because sometimes having a visual, I'm a visual learner, visual.
And may I ask, we'll get that into you in good time.
Perfect.
If, if there are questions that arise on your, on your end, can you, can you ask us that we can have the information for you when we come in?
Yes.
That would help us a lot.
Yep, because I'm sure we're all human, we might think of something on the way home.
There's a lot of stuff.
And we also do get emails from the, from the public, so there could be something that comes up that we just didn't think to ask, so.
That's, that'd be wonderful.
Trust to hear them.
Yeah, that would be great.
So, so what will, so...
Filtering this.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a conver, so our lawyer will have a conversation on the process. We will make sure that we put that out, so that you understand what that process is for next week, and then we'll go from there. I've got one more thing left to do. You guys can stay where you are. Board County Commissioner Liaison Meeting next week, is attending.
Public comment.
Yeah, and more.
Oh, yeah, anybody else have? Public comment? Why? Can you really make with it? Are, are they allowed to go there? Yeah.
You asked.
I'll just stand here. You gotta come up.
You have to come up to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I could be loud enough. I probably can.
And you need to introduce yourself as, you know, would really bring you up normally.
Hi, Amanda Denofrio, Centerville. So I just wanted to say, as a parent with charter skill, charter schools and lotteries, one of my main concerns about bringing my students there would be whether or not both of my children could attend. I know there are many parents in this community who would probably have that same question, and who, for that question, it may make the determining factor over whether or not they send their children there. Furthermore, I would like to say, with any buildings, I wasn't here before the decision to put up the new Board of Education building, but I know we're looking to build a new middle school, and that'll happen in the future, and this may be another opportunity to have a new building. With that being said, and the struggles that we're making in our community, I have seen it where other school districts have taken the opportunity to put in solar panels, set those up to batteries, and use those as a revenue system, so that they can get teachers and get something. And that may be something, while we're talking about what Centerville Elementary School needs, can we do something with that where the county commissioners would be more encouraged to help purchase these systems for the schools in need? Because something with solar at that aspect of the size of a school can really make an impact, not just for the school and lowering your energy costs, but for the community as a whole, especially given the concerns over heating and fuel costs last year that we saw with Delmarva.
That would be a conversation for the county commissioners, and their meeting is next week.
Let me do, if a, if a child is included in the lottery, siblings are a lot of...
You guys can have that.
Just trying to move on to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the, is there anybody else? Okay, thank you. We'll make a determination on the meeting right after this one. The future meeting and events, so we have the 9:10 meeting, which is next Wednesday, and then the next main board meeting is 10:01. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can I make a motion to adjourn close, or open session at 8:50 PM?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Drive safely.